Good morning.
No feedback?
Good morning. Good morning. Testing.
Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Testing, testing.
That sounds better.
We're good. Sorry. Testing, testing.
Testing, testing.
We have to unmute the room.
Testing.
Testing, testing. Testing, testing. No, nothing's coming up. We're good? Okay, so we're live on YouTube still?
Yeah.
Okay. Members, please turn on your videos. Laptops muted, microphones working? Okay.
Good morning. In accordance with Sections forty-five and fifty-three of the Planning Act nineteen ninety is amended, this meeting of the Committee of Adjustment is called to order. My name's Larry Clay and I'll be chairing today's session. Panel members today are Nellie Wolfport, Ryan Bissonnet, Phil Goesch, and we'd like to welcome our new member Katie Plazer, just recently appointed by council. Our Deputy Secretary Treasurer today is Sabrina Salatino. We acknowledge that land we are meeting on is a traditional territory of many nations, including the Mississaugas of the Credit, the Anishna Bag, the Chipewa, and the Hodenasone, and the Wendat Peoples, and is now home to many diverse First Nations, Inuit and Métis people. We also acknowledge that Toronto is covered by Treaty thirteen with the Mississaugas of the Credit. Committee of Adjustment public hearings are now conducted in a hybrid in-person and virtual format. Some applicants and participants will make their submissions in person, while others will participate virtually by electronic means through WebEx. The meetings are also streamed on the Toronto City Planning YouTube channel, and anyone wishing to view the hearing may watch on YouTube. Those who want to participate virtually and request registered in advance will be connecting with their computer or telephone and have the option of participating via video or audio. When your item is called, you'll be unmuted by the moderator. For both in-person and virtual participants, Committee of Adjustment staff will share presentations submitted in accordance with the written submission deadline. People attending in person today who want to receive a copy of the decision on an application must fill out a decision request card, and those participating virtually need to submit a written request by email. If you do not agree with the decision of the committee, you may be able to appeal the decision to the Toronto local appeal body or in some limited circumstances to the Ontario Land Tribunal. However, the provincial government amended the Planning Act and generally removed rights of third parties to appeal Committee of Adjustment decisions. Only the applicant, the Minister of Misfairs and Housing, specified persons, and public bodies are permitted to appeal decisions of the committee. Appeal instructions are set at the bottom of the decision. Today, I'll call each item in the order listed on the agenda, and where an application is uncondested, the agent or applicant may proceed with their presentation if desired. When the committee does not require a presentation, applicants are to advise the chair should they wish to speak to the committee. The committee may ask questions and/or take the matter into committee for a decision. Each speaker, including the applicant, will be given a maximum of five minutes to address the committee, and I'll comment when you're reaching the five-minute mark. Any presentation or other materials you wish to submit to the committee must have been emailed in advance. Staff and committee members cannot accept new materials at the hearing. When addressing the committee, please clearly state your name and address, and remember to confine your remarks to the matters outlined in the application. The applicant or agent will proceed first and make a presentation; then individuals either in support or opposed to the application will be invited to speak. Generally, we call on speakers in the hearing room and then those participating through WebEx. Committee members may ask questions of each speaker after they've finished their presentation, and when all speakers are finished, the applicant or agent has an opportunity to rebut those issues that were raised by the speakers. This will mark the end of the discussion, and the application will be taken into committee for a decision. Madam Deputy Secretary Treasurer, are there any minutes to confirm from previous meetings?
Good morning, Mr. Chair and panel members. Not at this time.
All right. Are there any declarations of interest from anyone in this morning session? See none? Are there any files to be closed?
Through you, Mr. Chair, yes. We do have nine files that I'm going to ask the members to move a motion to close. These files were previously deferred. They're with us from two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two, and two thousand and twenty-three. There's been no movement. We have done the procedural order of contacting the applicants and the owners, and they no longer want to pursue these applications, so we need to have them closed. So the first one is file number A zero seven two seven slash twenty-one, T E Y, municipal address sixteen eighty-seven Bathurst Street. The second is file number A zero one two seven slash twenty-two, T E Y, municipal address seventy-three Hawkins Avenue. The next one is file number A zero two zero three slash twenty-two, T E Y, municipal address forty-two Kennedy Park Road. The next is file number A zero six one zero slash twenty-two, T E Y, municipal address twenty-eight Dunnvegan Road. Next file is A zero two nine three slash twenty-three, T E Y, municipal address ten Bartlett Avenue. File number A zero five nine three slash twenty-three, T E Y, municipal address one eighty-three Beatrice Street. File number A one zero seven three slash twenty-three, T E Y, municipal address sixty-three Rensen Road. And the last one is file number A zero zero one three slash twenty-three, T E Y, municipal address eight Degrassi Street. So if I can have a motion to close these files, no refunds will be issued because they were previously deferred.
Okay, can I get a motion, Ryan?
Yep, motion to declare the files closed.
Okay, I have a second there. Phil, all in favor? Those files are closed. Sabrina, you also had a message to...
Yes, through you, Mr. Chair. Recent regulatory changes under the Planning Act modernized public notice requirements, enable municipalities to provide alternative notice of public hearings for minor variance in consent applications. Many municipalities in the Greater Toronto area and beyond have chosen to provide alternative forms of notice as an interim measure during the Canada Post Labor disruption. The city has gone beyond what the regulations require. Some of the things we have done include posting on the City of Toronto website, posting links to the agendas and application information on our web pages, posting on city planning social media channels, posting public hearing signs on the subject site, and publishing the agenda list in the Toronto Star. And so all of these measures have been taken for this public hearing today. Through you, Mr. Chair, we do have one item for deferral, but we also have three files. And we're going to hear from the applicant to close these files. We were going to hear them today, items sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen, five eighty-seven, five eighty-nine, and five ninety-one, Oakwood Avenue. So what I would ask is maybe we'll unmute the agent and hear the reason for closure of these.
Those closed, not postponed? Closed.
Yeah. So items sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen. We'll hear from Sean Galbraith.
Good morning.
Mr. Galbraith.
Mr. Clay.
Name an address for the record, sir.
Sean Galbraith, planner for the application, eighteen King Street East, Suite fourteen hundred.
Great, I'm not going to read this into the record since you're asking for withdrawal. Sir, could you just maybe give us an explanation for the closure?
Sure, the application was made in the interim when the new changes to the Garden Suites bylaw was under appeal. That appeal has been resolved, and the changes are now in effect, and it makes these variances moot.
All right.
It's now as of right.
Okay, that's great. Thank you very much, sir. All right, we need a motion to close these three files. Nellie?
Bring in the motion to close those files as requested.
So just to be clear, this is files sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen.
Yep.
Okay. Have a second there. Phil? All in favor? Okay, those files are closed.
And through you, Mr. Chair, we do have one request for deferral this morning. Item number one, municipal address two four four Queen Street East, file number A zero five one one slash twenty-five, T E Y. We can deal with that deferral request at this time.
All right. This is item number one, two forty-four Queen Street East. Committee has before a copy of the plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations, six photographs of trees on the subject property, a covering letter from the agent, and a deferral request from the agent. And is the agent here or online?
Through you, Mr. Chair, we do have the agent online. No registered speakers for this item.
Yes, good morning, Mr. Chair and members of the committee. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Name an address, please, sir.
My name is Peter Voltinas of Castles Brock and Blackwell LLP. Our firm's address is forty Temperance Street, Suite thirty-two hundred.
Okay, sir, you're seeking a deferral this morning?
Yes, that's correct. Just as some brief background for the purpose of the deferral, my client is requesting a deferral on the basis that we recently received the zoning applicable law certificate for the application last week, and we're in the process of reviewing that certificate and also scheduling a meeting with city staff to review those notifications and the certificate in detail, and then revise the application as necessary. And so the purpose of the deferral is really to help streamline the application and ensure that only the required variances go before the committee.
Okay, that sounds great. Thank you. We have someone online but only listening, not speaking? Okay. All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, let's... Can I get a motion to defer from someone? Nellie? Your mic on?
Sorry. Defer item number one, two forty-four Queen Street East, as requested.
Okay, motion to defer. Have a second there. Katie? All in favor? You have your deferral, sir, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we move on to item number two. This is one oh three Cole Hill Drive. This is an application to... Oh, sorry, hang on there a second. It's an application to alter the existing three-story apartment building containing three residential dwelling units by constructing a front three-story addition, also to construct a rear one-story ancillary building to contain waste storage and six bicycles parking spaces. There will be a total... There'll be a front ancillary outdoor area for five vehicle parking spaces, and there will be a total of thirteen residential dwelling units on this lot. Committee has before a copy of the plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations, twenty photographs of the subject property, a covering letter from the agent, previous decision number affecting the subject property. We have an arborist report and a tree protection plan. There is email correspondence from Transportation Services and from the TRCA. There is staff reports from urban forestry and ravine and natural feature protection. We have one form letter in support from forty-one Olav's Road. We have correspondence in concern from the Swansea Area Rate Payers Association and correspondence in opposition from one oh five Cole Hill and eight sixty-three St. Clair Avenue West, Unit one seven oh four.
Through you, Mr. Chair, we have the agent online, and we have a number of registered speakers in opposition.
Okay, thank you. All right. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Can you hear me okay?
Name an address, please, sir.
Okay, my name is Dana Chumovic. I'm the architect for this project. I'm located at eleven eighty-five Queensway East in Mississauga.
Okay, sir, you were before this committee before, and I think you were refused, so... And we do have some people that are here to speak to this item, so we'll need a presentation, please.
No problem. Thanks for giving me the time to do so. Yes, we were here on May twenty-first, and unfortunately, even without any city planning objections, we did lose B two-two. From that meeting, basically, we took to heart what the comments were from the planners that refused us or the committee members that refused us. And most of the commentary had to do with the fact that we were proposing in the initial May twenty-first proposal a longer building as well as a parking lot that was abutted to the front property line. Since that meeting, we've done a couple of things. We've discussed this with the owner, and we've also met with the owners next door as well as the Swansea Committee as well, Rate Payers Committee. So we had a meeting with them. We discussed sort of the best ways to sort of reduce the impact on the neighborhood and also try to reduce the issue with the front parking lot. So if you could, please zoom in on that parking lot. Yep, perfect. Thank you. So as you mentioned, there is an ancillary garbage storage building that's been placed at the back that was initially at the front. It also contains bike parking storage as well. So that was one of the ways that we could eliminate or reduce some of the variances regarding bike parking. If you can scroll over to the right, the existing building is in a black hatch. The proposed building is in a light gray hatch. Couple of things that we've done to reduce or eliminate some of the variances. We actually reduced the length of the new addition. So the building in gray has been reduced by about point five four of a meter. So it went from thirty-five sixteen, the addition, to thirty-four sixty-two. Then we reduced the sidewalk to the right of the gray stair number four from one point eight to one point five. This gave us just about three feet. If you can scroll over a little bit more to the right, you'll see that the new parking lot... Just a little bit to the right, please. So we can see the parking to the right. Yep, keep going to the right. Yep, thank you. So there is that property line, and now we have an offset of point eight four or eight four five from the actual property line where we're proposing some type of a green shrub to basically shield the parking spaces, the five parking spaces that we're providing for the new tents. In addition to that, we basically provided a fenced-in play area, and this was based on our discussion with the Swansea group as well. They were concerned about the safety of any children living in this building and if they had no real area to play in. So we're proposing a fenced-in area in that triangle at the top, just above the parking lot itself. By basically reducing the entire building as well as the sidewalk, we've now improved on a couple of the variances. So from the list of variances that you have in front of you, the number one dealt with the minimum required front yard setback of forty point five. This was actually discussed in the first meeting, and you can see that front setback on my site plan. You'd have to scroll over to the left. I think the members of the committee agreed that that front setback of forty and a half meters is quite out of date, you know, for today's standards. It's literally that red line in the middle of my second staircase in the gray building. So we're at eighteen meters because we reduced the building length or width, if you will. It used to be... So again, it's a significant setback that we have now. We're at about fifty-nine-foot setback from the front property line, but the building has been reduced. By reducing the building, by reducing the sidewalk, we've also increased item number two. So the landscape number percentage has increased, and the softscape number has increased by a slight amount as well. Item number four deals with the side strip landscaping. As you can see, this is a shared parking lot or driveway between one oh three and one oh five. So we're really not able to provide softscape on the bottom property line here, which I think is referred to... Yep, you can just stay there. Which is referred to, I think, as the west. And then above the building, which I think is being referred to as the east, we do have three feet of softscape, but not all the way along. For example, the existing building has a paved sidewalk just on top of it. So that's item number three and number four. Number five deals with the...
I was going to ask you, sir, you're coming up in your five minutes. If you could just move along quickly, please?
Sure, yeah. There is quite a few things I want to talk about, but we've met with the owners, we've met with the Swansea Association. You know, we've reduced the building in trying to reduce the impact on the neighborhood and the variances themselves. We've increased the softscape and the landscape. We have an increased play area. And one of the biggest concerns from the last committee was the distance from parking to the property line. That's been reduced as well. So hopefully, all of these moves will allow us to proceed with this proposal. And I do have eight letters of support that were submitted very late. My apologies. Kingsley has suggested that he could potentially share those during today's meeting, but potentially, we can look at those later after discussions.
Okay, sir, thank you very much. I know we've got some people lined up to speak. I just had one point of clarification question. The municipal boulevard that is between your property line and the sidewalk, what's the depth of that and what's the treatment that you're proposing for that?
Well, so the part between the property line and the sidewalk.
Yeah, between the property line and the sidewalk.
Yeah, I think we have some photos on the cover page, but that is all basically... It's asphalt where the driveway is and softscape right beside it. So we would leave it the way it is. I'm not sure if I have photos of the existing in the set.
Okay.
But there would be no change past the property line.
The rendering seems to show cedar trees. Is that the plan?
Correct, yes. We plant on our property, the part that we can plant on. We would produce some cedar plants there to shield the parking lot. Again, that was one of the biggest issues that the committee had at the last meeting.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right. Maybe we can go... Is there anyone in the audience today that's here to speak to this item?
Through you, Mr. Chair, yes, there's three speakers here in person.
Okay. Who wants to go first? Nick, is it you?
Good morning, Nicholas Singh, Swansea Rate Payers.
Okay, go ahead, sir.
This May, the application was refused by the committee, and since then, as mentioned, we did meet with the owner's agent and members of the community in August to discuss a revised proposal, and that is essentially the proposal that we have here today. We find that the revisions leave the enormity of the original variances relatively unchanged. This is essentially the same proposal with the same issues. It is a massive overbuild and a huge departure from the current conditions that we find in this neighborhood context. The radical departure from setbacks, from building depth, they're unprecedented and will not complement the existing built form found on the neighborhood properties, and they will have an enormously negative effect on the street and on the public realm. Along Cole Hill Drive, starting at the upper end near the traffic circle, we find an apartment neighborhood with generous setbacks and well-kept open green spaces next to the public realm. This application is a complete departure from that. This proposal pushes the building itself twenty meters beyond the established front setback. It nearly doubles the permitted depth of the building, and it adds another twenty meters beyond that. In other words, twenty meters beyond the property line so that while the permitted depth is seventeen meters, we will have a building that measures over fifty meters from front to back and brings this building eight meters closer to the street than any other neighboring apartment building down the street. In addition, it ignores all regulations for the positioning of the parking area with a very small zero point eight four five-meter strip where the established setback, based on the character of this area, is actually fifty-four meters. At the same time, this proposal replaces the required six-meter separation from the proposed building with one point five meters. I note that the small area that's set aside for the trees, cedar trees, is very small, and whether or not it would actually support these trees is questionable. Its proximity to the street will expose it to salt, and we don't expect the trees to survive if they are planted. Apart from radically altering a number of the bylaws, this application... Apart from radically altering a number of the bylaws, this application completely ignores the requirement for bicycle maintenance space. It does not have space for this bylaw because this is an overbuild. With only five parking spots for thirteen dwelling units, the need for bicycle facilities screams out at us. This neighborhood features proximity to bicycle commuter paths along Blair Street to the north, Queen's Way to the south, as well as recreational paths on the Martin Goodman Trail through Hyde Park and along the Humber River, which goes all the way up to Edmonton. Sorry?
I don't know.
There's no room for this feature, which is essential to the provincial and city transportation policies because this proposal is an overbuild. Another bylaw that this proposal seeks to ignore requires a soft landscaping setback at the side of the lot line. We understand the asphalt driveway is an existing condition on one side of the property, and the walkway on the existing building is also an existing condition on the other side. However, the newer and larger portion of the building should be able to provide this necessary green strip. This redevelopment is a massive overreach that will disrupt the character of the area of Swansea and does not meet the test for being minor for maintaining the intent and purpose of the zoning bylaws or the official plan. And while it does provide additional units, it's because of this overreach that it is not desirable. If the committee should decide to approve the proposal, we also note that the previous application had comments from urban forestry. I haven't seen of the recent one. And we, we support those conditions. In, in the conclusion, we recommend that this application be refused. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? See none? Thank you. Our next speaker in the room?
Mr. Chair, committee, my name is David Bernendorf. I'm at eight six three St. Clair Avenue West, Toronto, M six S zero B two.
All right, sir.
I'm the co-owner of one oh five Cohill Drive.
All right, you have five minutes, sir.
Thank you very much, sir. So our objective is to, to state that we are in principle opposed to the resubmission of this proposal on the grounds that this resubmission does not meet public interest and does not meet the four tests of section forty-five one of the Planning Act for the following reasons. We believe that there is a violation of urban forestry.
Sorry, can I interrupt? He has a comment.
I'm, I'm sorry. So ma'am, this is his time, not yours. You, if you're speaking, you'll have an opportunity to share with the panel when you arrive. Okay?
Yeah.
Go ahead, sir.
So the elimination of mature sixty-five-year-old trees, I think is a desecration of the urban forests, which are diminishing in Toronto. Number one, architectural stall. Architectural stall does not meet anything. It does not meet the context of the neighborhood to the south, where there are nineteen fifty's apartment buildings that have been built with a substantial setback that is mirrored by the triplexes that this is, this address is a part of. The context also is violating the, or the, the architecture being proposed is violating the architecture of the residential homes just to the north and to the west. So that's, again, does not meet the context.
I asked to show your power.
Lack of green strips, lack of green strips are very minimal, if not even any, on the proposal compared to what is in the existing architectural details of other homes. Sightlines, this architectural detail will jut out substantially straightforward to the street, even with some of the variance cutbacks, setbacks that have been mentioned by the applicant. We still pose the arc reservation about that, that that is not substantial enough, that in keeping with the architectural standards that are there currently, this still is very obtrusive. And we have done a committee, we have, sorry, not committee, I have done a petition last night. You know, an hour and a half, I obtained over twenty signatures of local residents who are opposed to this. Safety. This, I'm sorry, I can't bring up my PowerPoint presentation. Is that correct, sir? Yeah, unfortunately. Yeah, okay. So if you look at the sightlines of this, there's a circle around about at Cohill and Windermere. The property is just south of this, by a few feet. And that, that Cohill Drive roundabout is a very, very busy area. There are substantial amounts of traffic increases based on the fact there will be another seven hundred proposed, well, actually, they've been allowed, subsidized housing units at the end of the block. Seven hundred, ladies and gentlemen. Then we have another factor. Just around the corner, there's another five hundred and sixty units being planned at the Southport Condom Development Two Towers. I think one's twenty-nine, the other one's twenty-six stories high. Then further, just down the street, actually, just starting at the south end of the one oh three address, is a collection of dwellings, which are substantial apartment buildings, altogether encompassing approximately between four hundred fifty to five hundred units already built. So we really fail to see why we need an extra ten units that will be jeopardizing the health and safety of people in the neighborhood, will be creating a bottleneck in the transportation just south of the, the roundabout, creating significant safety hazards. I've lived there for a while before. I moved to eight six three Coh, St. Clair West. And when the delivery vehicles park, they park right in front of one oh three Cohill because they can't get any closer to the roundabout. Then the driver runs into the buildings, makes the deliveries. In the meantime, a bus going southbound pulls up. Well, that stops all the traffic. With trying to get out of the driveway, backing out of the one oh five, one oh three address becomes actually very hazardous because you're being obstructed by large vehicles, by pedestrians, by young kids. With seven hundred units built down the street, there will be an exponential number of young children using that sidewalk. So we are in conclusion saying that this is almost unacceptable. Well, this is unacceptable to us. We are basically saying that in conclusion, we fail to see how this proposed project serves the public good. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Panel, any questions? The speaker. Phil, hang on a sec, sir. Hang on a sec, sir. We have a question for you.
Yeah.
So you're a part owner of the property directly to the north, correct?
That's correct, one oh five.
Yeah. Have you spoken to any of the tenants about this proposal?
We've had some, my partner has spoken. I haven't personally spoken with them.
Okay. And have they raised any concerns? And if so, what have
I would have to ask my partner to speak to that.
Okay. That's fine.
Yeah, okay.
Thanks.
Now, thank you, sir.
Sorry, sorry. One question, just for clarification. When did you submit your presentation?
Just now.
Okay, that's why we weren't able to upload it because we didn't receive it.
I know.
I just want that on public record. Thank you.
Fair enough.
Are we finished? Yep, you're, you can go now. All right. Do we have another speaker in the room? Yes, ma'am, point up.
No, me, how about you, sir?
Hi there. We'll need your name and address, please.
Anna Harris, one oh five Cohill Drive. And we got our notice in the mail eighteen hours before the deadline. We worked furious.
Ma'am, can I just clarify, are you the owner or a tenant?
I'm part owner with
Part owner, okay, thank you.
David is my partner.
Okay.
So we got the notice eighteen hours, an advance notice. We dropped most of what we were doing to dedicate our time. My presentation includes a PowerPoint presentation, which took a lot of effort. And a picture is worth more like a million words in, in this instance because what you see on paper showing a narrow strip is nowhere near the reality. I'd love to show our presentation. We were told that we couldn't submit it. At first, we were told we could submit it by twelve, then we were told we couldn't submit it, but that we could show it as we present. So instead of presenting it online ahead of time, we were told that that would be part of our presentation materials.
Through you, Mr. Chair. The application technician did get in contact with these individuals. They did send a presentation, but it wasn't in PDF form, and it was sent early this morning. So it's very late. So we were expecting, we would have been able to present it, but in the form that it came in, we're not able to upload it. And then the discussion went mute. So.
So ma'am, as an alternative, I'll, I'll reset the clock for you. Do you have the hard copy of the presentation in front of you? No, no, I'm not saying that we'll distribute it, but you may want to use it to walk us through your presentation, even though we won't see the illustrations. That's your, your decision, however you want to handle.
Can I walk around the room and show you?
No, you cannot.
Okay.
So, but if there's material in there that you wanted to, to speak to the panel about, then you can do that.
Not to beat a dead horse, but we were given almost no, nobody does the work that we did within an eighteen-hour period.
So ma'am, I appreciate your frustration, but I want to move things along here. So if, if that's your presentation, maybe you can use it to help guide your comments. We unfortunately won't be able to look at it, but if it's helpful to you, why don't you do that?
May I ask Dave to help me walk through it?
Sure, he's, he's a registered speaker, yeah.
And can we show? I mean, you won't even see this way.
No, they don't see it.
Okay.
But you can use it as a guide to share your thoughts with the panel.
Okay, so.
Okay, so, hold on. Reset, reset the, reset the clock. Okay, we're good. All right, you have five minutes.
So we have a roundabout with very high volume of traffic moving at a fairly substantial pace. Just south of that, by maybe forty-five feet is our driveway to one oh five, one oh three Cohill Drive. Makes it very problematic getting out of the, in and out of the driveway now. Backing out is very problematic. When delivery vehicles park right in front of the address, one oh three Cohill, they block that side of the lane going north.
May I say something?
Yeah.
So what happens is that we're creating a parallel issue. So on one side, we have service trucks, which more often than not has nothing to do with our property, but the other flanking properties. So you'll have a large service truck blocking our drive, but more important, the sightlines to families and children going up that area. On the other side, like David said, you may have a bus or other vehicles. Children and families cannot see because when those buses are stopped, regardless of the law saying that you can't pass a vehicle, other cars will whip around southbound, around the roundabout, and go between those two vehicles. So children and families on either sidewalk going by, their drivers can't see them, and they can't see the drivers. When you look at the roundabout, you've got four walkways. So here's your roundabout, and you have two walkways this way, two walkways that way. They're just very small. It's a bottleneck for one vehicle at a time. The idea is that kids and families can cross at those very small walkways. I can say from personal experience, people don't even stop or yield. So people might be getting a little better, but when you add to that the vehicular traffic on top of blind spots, on top of children that, you know, they run. I can't tell you how many times I see children running away from their caregivers. And
Another issue is with the delivery trucks parking in the front on the curb, basically. Some actually do that, some pull right into the driveway, which is fairly wide, but not enough for a truck to then safely back out. So that's another issue, is those large trucks, delivery trucks will constantly be backing out, creating another safety hazard at the sidewalk. Another issue is that vans and SUV delivery vehicles will try to make a three-point turn or a four-point turn in the driveway, and they have damaged our bricks to the point of totally disrepair. It'll be thousands of dollars for us to repair our, our side concrete embankments.
On that point, and we do have photographs. We don't, when we have seen people do this. When I was away, we had, I'm assuming it must have been a large truck, they actually damaged the brick to our garage, which is built under the first floor. So they damaged our brick, and I had paid a substantial amount of money to have a hose reel. When they damaged our bricks, they also pushed in the hose reel, so I can no, it no longer functions. I can't unroll it. So we've had damage to the main building brick, to external accessories that help us manage our property, as well as all along the property line. We have a retaining wall. That's all shifting down as the bricks have been damaged. Like I said, it's not us. Right now, I'm the only person there because I'm in the process of renovating. So it's my car. All of us that are involved with that, we know the property, so we never damage. So the only opportunity they have at the front to do the three-point turns is they often use the parking pad, our parking pad, which is also flanked by bricks that we paid for. They often knock those bricks down. I've had people say to me when I point out, you know, could you please put our bricks back? And they just drive off. So it's left to me.
So, Mr. Chair and committee, another issue is, I, I'm sixty-six years old. I've been driving very safely for five decades. For the first time, August twelfth, I caused an accident. Where did I cause an accident? I caused it in the driveway between one oh three and one oh five. Why did I cause the accident? I was in a hurry. I was backing up, and I didn't acknowledge that my neighbor parked his Porsche, it's a two thousand seventeen Porsche, right behind me. I backed into it with minor scratches. I asked him to get an estimate. It was five thousand eight hundred and twenty dollars and sixty-four cents for minor scratches on this Porsche. My mistake. I'm stupid. Accidents happen. I'll bring to your attention, with the exits facing north into the driveway, invariably, there will be people, children, bicycles, delivery vehicles pulling up in that driveway. When a driver is not expecting something to be there, that just exponentially adds to safety problems.
Quickly, ironically, that accident happened on the way to the Swansea Area Rate Payers Association Town Hall, so we could meet Danas Semovic. The sun was setting low. The neighbor pulled in behind us. It blinded David, and we had a six thousand dollar bill to pay.
All right, ma'am. You, your five minutes is
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Panel, any questions to the speaker? Nellie?
Yeah.
Hold it, sorry.
Thank you. Sorry, could you address the question that I had asked earlier about tenants, whether you've spoken to any?
I have.
Well firstly, do you reside in one oh five yourself?
I reside in one oh five. It's my primary residence.
And have you spoken to any of the other tenants of the building?
I've
And have any of them raised concerns? And if so, what are they?
I've actually spoken to the tenants, yes, and they weren't aware. So Mr. Chu never informed to them that this was taking place. They found out from me. I didn't get my first notice either. Never got it at all. I saw neighbors looking at the property, asked them what they were doing.
Sorry, as the landlord, it is your duty to inform the tenants. So it's good that you did.
No, no, no. I don't have tenants. I'm renovating the triplex.
Okay, so.
The tenants next door were not informed. And you're right.
Sorry, sorry.
Mr. Chu should have told them, and they didn't.
I'm, my question is, the other tenants of your building?
I have no tenants.
You have no tenants? You're the only resident.
I'm primary, and I'm in the process of renovating.
I see. Okay, thank you.
So just to be clear, so the applicant will, would also have had to post notice on the property. So I assume that
He did, and that's when the tenants found out.
Okay, so we will confirm with the applicant that the notice
It is there.
Was properly posted.
It wasn't properly posted at first, but the first round, they didn't post it properly. The second round, they did, after we, when, yeah, so they did the second time.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Nellie?
A couple of questions, actually. So I understand that you are most immediate neighbors sharing the driveway. So have you talked, or have you tried to talk with the owners of one oh five, one oh three about the issue?
Yes, we've contacted the owners. It's always been Danas Semovic. So on our own time, we've, we've always been available to meet and to speak, but his representative, Danas Semovic, is the only person that has spoken to us.
And in general, are you objecting to intensifying, or, you know, densifying this property, or are you objecting to the, the volume of the project in general?
I'm objecting to the fact of, yes, volume. The complete disregard for any minor variances, which are not minor, and the impact that will have on the safety and lives of people. We already have dog crate, bowling alley, sardine condos, plenty of them. We don't need more. And so to add more, to take away family dwellings, we're renovating our thirteen-hundred square units and adding an extra bedroom, so we can have people, we have three bedroom, two bathroom. We can host to families who want to be in that great area and a good school catchment. And there's no reason they couldn't have two children, one in each bedroom, and then a master bedroom, which is quite large by anybody's standards. So we will host more families, as there are now. To put micro condos when we have fifty thousand coming to fruition that nobody wants to live in and they can't buy, we all know what's happening with that. Why would we add more condos like that?
All right, I think you've answered the question. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else? Thank you very much. Anyone else in the room? No. Do we have someone online?
Yes, we do.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Yes, we have two speakers online.
All right. Good morning.
This is Michael. You've been unmuted.
Thank you very much. My name is Michael Barton. My address, fourteen eighty-nine Abbey Wood Drive in Oakville. I prepared a written submission. However, it was submitted after the, the deadline for the written submission, so I don't believe the committee has had a chance to review it. So I think we have heard the details of the proposal. So just from a, a land use planning perspective
Sorry, Mr. Barton, you, it says here you're speaking on behalf of a neighbor. Who are you speaking on behalf of?
Uh, yes, I was, I was retained to provide a, a land use planning opinion by the owners of one oh five Cohill Drive.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
So yes, I, I provided a written submission. I was actually engaged after the, the deadline for the written submission, so that's why it, it, it didn't come in in time for the committee. Um, but I'm, I'm going to walk through the key points of my written submission. So the property is designated neighborhoods, uh, under the official plan. And under the current zoning for the property, the permitted uses include a range of housing, singles, semis, towns, triplex, fourplex, and apartment buildings. But it's important to note that only three lots to the west, the zoning actually changes to a designation that does not permit apartment buildings. So it allows detached, uh, houses, duplex, triplex, and fourplex, but not the apartment building. Um, we've heard some discussion about the existing characteristics of the property, but the key ones that I wanted to point out were that the large front yard setback that's there today, um, that's providing a, an open space and landscaped area that's consistent with the neighboring property at one oh, one oh five Cohill Drive. And there's also large front setbacks at one oh seven and one oh nine, and this provides, uh, an important open space buffering and transition to the public realm, as, particularly as you're moving to the single detached dwellings that are on Windermere Avenue. Um, the existing footprint, height, massing, and scale of the, of one oh three, the subject property, is consistent with that of one oh five, one oh seven, and one oh nine Cohill Drive. So in, in reviewing the existing characteristics, these buildings represented a transition from the larger apartment buildings to the east on Cohill Drive, as you're moving towards the, the single detached dwellings and that change in zoning on Windermere. Um, we've heard the concerns about the existing driveway having limitations for vehicles to turn around, as well as the, the close proximity to the roundabout. So there is certainly some concerns, uh, concerns about the, the current situation. So the surrounding neighborhood itself is fully designated neighborhoods. As I mentioned, there's a transition of zoning, uh, as you move three lots to the west. Um, that, that open space character in the front yard is an important feature of the existing built form context. Um, so I really wanted to point that out. So I, what I've done is I've taken a look at the proposal and the variances from the, uh, the four test perspective. So as I mentioned, we are in a neighborhood. So for, the official plan, in my opinion, uh, the purpose and intent is to facilitate compatible physical change through enhancements, additions, and infill housing on, on individual properties that respects the existing physical character of the area and reinforces the stability. So, you, you know, there is the intent to seek a wider range of housing, but through insensitive infill and intensification that balances the, the need for residential density with neighborhood character. So my opinion is the variances individually and cumulatively do not maintain the intent and purpose of the official plan. Uh, the, the request of relief to the front yard setback will not respect and reinforce the prevailing character of the neighborhood in terms of setbacks to the street and the continuation of that open space landscaped area that contributes to the physical character of the neighborhood. Uh, the, the requested relief to the building depth does not respect and reinforce the prevailing scaling, scale, massing, and density of the nearby residential properties, particularly one oh five, one oh seven, and one oh nine Cohill Drive. The relief that's requested to the landscaping and the, and the landscape strips will significantly change the existing density, front, side yard, landscape, and open space characteristics of the subject property and its relationship to the neighborhood. And then the request of relief to the, the spatial separation for the outdoor parking really indicates that there's inadequate area on this property to accommodate the building and, and the parking. Um, in terms of the zoning, uh, the intent of regulating minimum front yard setbacks is to ensure consistency of dwellings, uh, along the street. So in my opinion, you're bringing this dwelling closer to the street, and you're not maintaining that, that physical character. Um, and the same with the building depth variance. The, uh, the scale and massing and density will not respect and reinforce the prevailing character. Uh, my opinion is the variances are not minor. They, they combine to change the character from that of a modest three-unit building to a thirteen-year building. Um, that is, the, the variances that are requested are, are beyond the scale, massing, and density, and we see that the, uh, the open space built form characteristics are not respected and reinforced. Uh, so again, for those reasons, it's also not desirable, in my opinion. It's effectively, uh, allowing for inappropriate residential intensification. It's overdeveloping the property, and it's not respecting and reinforcing.
I'm just going to draw to conclusion. Uh, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Panel, any questions to the speaker? Phil?
Uh, in your analysis, you speak of the character and considerations in respect of the condition to the north, but did your analysis consider the, um, large apartment building to the south and with a significantly, uh, smaller setback?
Uh, just to, are we speaking about the property of one oh, I guess it would be one oh one?
Yes.
Yes, so the, so if, our, smaller setback in terms of the existing condition, but what, what's proposed, the front yard setback would be significantly smaller than at one oh one. The, and I did consider, and that's why I looked at, you know, the element of the transition. So as you move to the, if you move to the east, I guess as I had characterized it along Cohill, you see those larger apartment buildings. They are three-story, but they have a larger footprint. Um, but as you're moving west, you get to one oh five, one oh seven, one oh nine, you're seeing that, um, similar footprint that you see on the, the subject property today, and it's, as that moves towards that change in zoning and the, uh, the single families along Windermere. So there, there is this transition that you're seeing as you move from east to west, so I've considered that in looking at, um, whether it's appropriate for this sub, this property to be redeveloped. And again, it's, it's considered a building addition, but effectively, it's a, a new building being constructed on the property with an attachment. So yes, I had considered that, that context.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? All right, thank you, sir. We have one more speaker.
Paul, you've been unmuted.
Good morning.
Good morning, sir.
Uh, my name is Paul Filkowitz, and I'm the owner of one oh seven Cohill Drive. Uh, just to clarify a few points that were asked earlier, I have never spoken with the owner of one oh three, nor his representative. Uh, further, I have talked to my tenants about the, uh, changes, and while they were supportive of having additional, uh, uh, units to, for affordability, uh, the scale of this project is far greater than what it should be. The fact that it goes essentially up to the road with no soft landscaping in the front. Uh, it'd be okay if they, you know, let's say put, made one addition, but it seems like they're almost adding like two hundred percent of the size of the building in order to grow this. So, uh, I am opposed to the development of this plan. Currently, uh, one oh three is one of four three-plexes on the east side of Cohill, which are of similar size building characteristics with significant soft landscaping facing the street. The current proposal is an aggressive, complicated plan, which should be considered a new build. The proposal increases the size of the building by approximately two hundred percent, and to me, it's difficult to explain to anyone how the, this build and the variances are minor. The main entrance to the building will face north and provide virtually no landscaping facing the street. Ideally, to make proper use of the subject property, the land of four three-plexes should be considered in aggregate and a new building created. This would result in the following: a proper designated building that will not restrict, not be restricted by the driveway or the width of the property, one driveway versus three, an entrance that faces the street with some soft landscaping, which would be consistent with the character and build of the street. I have spoken to the owner of one oh nine Cohill Drive. The owner of one oh five Cohill Drive is at this meeting, and we'd be willing to sell our properties, subject to a satisfactory price, so the proper development could occur here. So let's speak to some of the variances. The third variance, fifty percent of the area lot must be maintained, is landscaping. The proposal has twenty-nine point five percent of the required landscaping. That's only fifty-nine percent of the required landscaping. This is not a major change. Viewing the property in its new build form, there will be virtually no landscaping visible from the street. Variant six, um, by, uh, the, the parking area of more than three vehicles should be no closer than the other buildings, which is currently fifty-four point one five meters. The proposal will have vehicles parked right beside the sidewalk, a distance of point eight-five meters. That sidewalk is used by children going to Swansea Public School. It would be a terrible thing if anyone was injured due to a car trying to maneuver into or out of a parking spot. This is a safety issue. Variant eight, bicycle maintenance facilities must be provided. Why has a developer chosen to ignore this requirement? Well, not a variance, the amount of parking will be an issue. As the owner of one oh seven Cohill Drive for over thirty years, I can advise you that, over the years, each unit has used at least one parking spot. Typically, four parking spots are used for three units. This proposal will have thirteen units, only five parking spots. Where will the other cars be parked? Privacy is also an issue. Currently, the majority of the unit windows of the three-plexes are on the east and west side of the building. In other words, facing the ravine and facing the street. Based on the proposal, the addition will have windows, as well as entrances facing north, towards one oh five and one oh seven Cohill. This proposal will create a build that has no characteristic to the buildings on Cohill Drive, will have no visible landscaping from the street, and the variances are not minor. Uh, as for the communication process with, with this hearing, it was problematic. I would have provided written comments, but I received notice of the meeting on October fourteenth, and written comments were to be submitted the next day, October fifteenth, at four thirty P M. Even the amount of time to prep for this meeting, it's not enough time. Uh, the city was well aware of the postal strike, yet did not change the meeting date or ensure that we received notice by other means, such as receiving notice by courier. Uh, it's not okay, okay to simply state, well, everyone is in the same process, position, so it's okay to proceed this way. Uh, the city must maintain its due process for these meetings. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any questions to the speaker? See none? All right, I think that's the end of our speakers?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Asimovik?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There's quite a bit there for me to respond to, obviously, in five minutes. If, is it at all possible for you to share the aerial view of this neighborhood while I try to deal with some of the comments? It's not in the presentation, unfortunately, if that's what you're looking for.
So we can call up Google View?
Yeah, yeah, that would be wonderful if you can. Google Maps, and, yeah, and open up the aerial view. While you're doing that, I'm, I'm going to use up my time, if that's okay. To be clear, we are proposing ten units, two bedrooms each, at about seven hundred and fifty square feet. The intent is, is that they are affordable rentals, okay, at about twenty-three to twenty-five hundred dollars per month uh, in this, uh, current marketplace, okay? So that's what we're trying to do, basically create ten affordable apartments. Um, for some of the comments that have been made, the reason I'm asking you to bring this up, and you can actually stay zoomed out. If you do, Mr. Barton brought up the issue of houses, three, uh, three lots, uh, north of us, if you will, uh, basically suggesting that they are all houses, two to three stories, and so on. But if you look at the setbacks, number one, for the, for those houses, they are going to be much less than what we, we are proposing. Our proposal, basically, uh, and again, some of the comments that were made are just erroneous. Parking is at about twelve feet from the sidewalk. It's not right at the property line. Our property line is not at the sidewalk. So we have about a twelve-foot setback from parking to the sidewalk itself. Um, the building itself is actually seventy feet approximately from the building to the sidewalk, right? If you add up those, those dimensions, we're asking for about thirty percent landscape. Uh, you know, in an urban environment, we're asking at about thirty-five percent softscape. The zoning bylaws that are here for setbacks and softscapes at about fifty percent and forty-meter setback, it's one hundred and thirty-two feet. That's an actual, like, residential lot. Those are way out of date, and I know the committee agreed with me on that, on the last item. Uh, we have, uh, uh, again, you know, tried to provide something that is soft intensification, that pays attention to the, the actual neighbor, uh, neighborhood, and if you can, again, go back to that aerial view, it'll become very evident of the size, the scale of the surrounding buildings on Cohill. They range from three to five stories. As you go further south towards, uh, towards the lake, some of the setbacks are decreasing to, you know, what I'm assuming is about forty, fifty feet, if that. Um, again, what we're proposing is about seventy feet from the sidewalk itself. I think it's significant. I think we've, you know, basically tried to come up with something that's feasible for the owner. There is no point in proceeding with this i- if it's a, a smaller building, but those were, uh, you know, those were some of the comments that I have, um, that I wanted to bring up. Uh, regarding the comments from the, uh, presenters, uh, you know, saying that this is a massive under, overbuild, that it's unprecedented, again, one look at street view, one walk down Cohill will basically, uh, you know, show you that this is exactly what should be getting built here. Uh, it's rather ironic that the last presenter, uh, discussed, uh, the possibility of joining the neighboring lots into a much larger development. Well, if you're open to that type of thing, why are you opposed to, you know, what we're proposing here, which I think is a lot more reasonable? So that just doesn't make sense to me. Uh, asking for more parking is not an urban response. You're just going to drive more people into cars. We're hoping for people to go and use mass transit and have bike paths. No, we do not have bicycle facilities, maintenance facilities, but we have four storage inside and six outside. And if you go up on Blure, there's plenty of bike stores, uh, that will service your bike, which it does not need everyday servicing. Windows on the two sides for privacy were made, uh, for, specifically made narrow, uh, from a privacy perspective. So that was one of the comments that the owner had. Um, uh, let's see, some of the other comments, uh... This is not a departure from the, from the neighborhood. Um, again, if you take a look at that aerial view, I think it becomes pretty obvious. This, this, these buildings, this is a, an one-off nineteen-sixties set of buildings, you know, where, we're trying to build something that's much more urban, that's off today, and, uh, there was a mention of seven hundred proposed units and five hundred units that have been approved by the city down the street. We're proposing ten, you know? So, so for them to come in and then basically tell, uh, say that this is an over, overbuild, it just doesn't, uh, doesn't match what's, what's being approved throughout the city. We have six-plexes being approved all over the place and, and on every property, basically. Uh, we have landscape amounts that are rather high at thirty-five percent. Uh, you know, we've, I, I tried to address some of their, uh, concerns through meeting and revisions and reductions in G F A and, and so on. But, uh, again, from our perspective, we think that this is a very reasonable proposal, uh, and that hopefully, one day, will provide for some additional affordable housing.
All right, sir. Thank you very much. Panel, any questions of the agent? Phil?
So I was, I was one of the members who was at the previous hearing, um, and I was the member that was, uh, perhaps the most concerned with the, uh, soft landscaping buffer of the parking. Uh, so I, I don't know whether to be honored, uh, that, that's the reason that you say you've, uh, that was the main reason that it was refused, and now you're back now that you put that there. But what, what I'd like to put to you, though, is that my recollection of that previous hearing was, yes, this was something that I was raising, but my colleague, uh, Peter Reed, who, uh, was also on the refusal side, uh, was more raising a concern that, uh, that I did take into account that, uh, perhaps this is a site that would do better with a rezoning, uh, to consider all of these issues. And, um, uh, and also, uh, somewhat in line with what, uh, one oh seven said, that, and, uh, the, what's proposed here might actually be an underbuild of the site. Um, but, uh, obviously, you can't, uh, uh, do, uh, do something much larger in a, in a minor's, uh, variance exercise. So my question to you is, you're, you're back here. That's what you've decided to do. Was there any consideration about going, um, for a, um, a complete rezoning? And why did you choose this route, or your, your principles?
Uh, no, I mean, yeah, I mean, basically, we're going this route because it's within, mostly within the zoning parameters. You know, we are zoned for an apartment building. We're not over on height. Uh, and I think as, as was mentioned in the first committee, uh, some of, some of the members were actually questioning why we have a forty-meter setback, you know, in an urban environment. Nobody really sort of... Nobody really sort of seemed to know what the history of that was, but again, you know, we're talking about fifty years ago. Was this ever taken into consideration to rezone and build something bigger, taller? No, because you're looking at a much greater budget, potentially underground parking, which, you know, is not within the budget of the owner. He's looking to build something that's reasonable from a cost perspective, and at the same time, basically make full use of this property.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? All right. No further questions. Thank you very much, sir. We'll take this into committee. Phil, you want to start us off? I was on that committee as well, and I think you and I had a different view of this one.
We did, we did. Now, my question was kind of a preface to my comments in committee. That was my recollection of what Peter and Gary, who was also on the refusal side, were sort of of the view that, you know, if this were a complete rezoning, the site planning issues would be looked at, and there would be an opportunity to do something more, and maybe that route was more appropriate for this development. Now, on the other hand, I think I would be pretty disingenuous to have been so concerned with this buffering of the parking and not be appreciative that they have come back with a proposal that does that. My concern was more of a character of the neighborhood concern of, you know, do we really want to be promoting in an urban environment like this, saying we're adding density, but we're going to have parking just abutting the street? They have provided a landscaping buffer in which they can put some shrubs and fence it off, and it does sound as though they've improved some other aspects, speaking with Swansea Ratepayers Association. I don't think this is an overbuild. I do remember we had a lot of discussion about the setback, and I do think the setback is just an artifact of something odd that happened a long time ago, that I would assume have to do with how this traffic circle has been oriented, or how streets were originally going to... Well, who knows what it is, but it's obviously an artifact when you look at it, and obviously not in keeping with the neighborhood to have the large setback. So I think with the changes that have been made, I take the agent's comments as fair, that the owner is entitled to develop to his budget. So I'm more supportive this time.
All right. Thank you, Phil. Nellie?
With regards to setbacks and, you know, forty-point-five-meter, you know, front, I agree, it seems a bit outdated, and the site, again, I have pros and cons, but the site looks like it's good for development because, again, the very deep front yard and, you know, adjacent properties, and a lot of rental buildings in the area. I know the area pretty well. I have a problem with kind of pushing it to the limit, what I would describe, so it's not a small side. And when we have all those variances with regards to landscaping, I just don't see the reason why, because, you know, it's, again, sometimes we have to compromise with landscaping when we have a really limited, you know, the front, or, you know, site is very small. But here, I just, I don't see the reason why it could have been, you know, just scaled back a little bit to be in line with the, you know, with minimum landscaping requirements. So those are my points.
So I'll weigh in. I think one of the reasons is you have parking, right? I mean, you're limited a little bit by providing a relatively modest amount of parking spaces for this. So I don't remember all my comments from the first time, but I, like you, I know this area very well. This, and I think the Swansea Area Ratepayers noted this in their correspondence, that this is fundamentally a very underutilized lot, in an area where it is close to Blurr Street, it's close to amenities, it's close to schools, it's certainly close to parks. And in terms of a location, it is an excellent location, and it is a site that, in my view, is quite ripe for additional density. And I don't think, and I didn't think in the past, that this was an overly excessive application, in part because of the space that is afforded in the front. They're not going back because that is a ravine and that is protected heritage or environmental land, so you can't go back, so you can only go forward. I do also look at the southerly portion. This is an area that, while to the north, for the most part, is characterized by some single-family homes, but certainly to the south, it is characterized by rental and, in some cases, rather large apartment buildings, with, quite frankly, very little green space by the look of it. This application, I think, tries to respect the site by trying to get as much green space in as possible while providing access and a modest amount of parking. So I don't see the landscaping issues as being significant, again, in part because, you know, in behind, there is significant parkland, there's lots of green space in the general vicinity. And the setbacks, in my view, aren't overly egregious. There is no height variance being requested, so the three stories is respecting, I think, the prevailing form in the area. Again, it's a good site for this kind of intensification. I would put to the members that if you're uncomfortable, first of all, I'm not sure where everyone's gonna sit, but if you're uncomfortable with the notion of soft landscaping, I think there might be an opportunity to encourage or have a condition to have the parking spaces in permeable pavers. At least it might help a little bit. It doesn't contribute to the variance, but I think it helps deal with the permeability. So I think, you know, with the changes that have been made, it, in my view, is a supportable application, given the need for additional rental accommodation in the city, and the appropriateness of this site to be able to accommodate that kind of rental intensification. Anyone else?
Sure. So I've heard people in the room and people on the phone talk about frustrations over this proposal, and as someone who's lived in every corner of urban Toronto, I understand those frustrations: traffic, parking, delivery trucks, poor driving, construction noise, and damage to property. These are Toronto issues. We live in a big city, and we still love our city. I appreciate your advocacy for your neighborhood. I don't see these matters as being aggravated by a new building. As you know, the city evolves and changes. It's a living organism. And when I look at this proposal in its entirety, I find this development desirable and responsible. I believe it fulfills the policy goals of additional rental housing, and I'll be supporting this project and proposal.
Okay. Thank you. Katie, any thoughts?
Thanks to everyone for their thoughtful comments on this one. One of my questions coming into this today was around whether the changes that we're seeing in today's application addressed well enough what was brought up during the previous hearing, and I'm heartened to hear that my colleagues here think that there have been some good changes on that front. Yeah, I'm sort of of two minds about it, but I do think that, based on what I've heard today, that it is a supportable application.
Okay. Great, thank you. With the committee's indulgence, I'm just gonna go out of committee for a second and speak to the agent about the paving for the driveway, if I could. We can have Mr. Azimovik back, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We would certainly be open to providing permeable pavers in the parking lot area. It's not an issue at all.
Great. And you also have some new walkways there as well, I noticed, from the site plan.
Yes, we do, yeah.
And similarly, permeable pavers for that?
No, I think that's a great idea.
Okay. Thank you very much, sir. Back in committee. All right. Who wants to take? Phil, do you want to take this one?
Sure, yeah. I also just wanted to make the comment that I'm actually not too concerned about the soft landscaping in this case, for the reason that, you know, it's percentages, right, of the lot, and this lot is just so large. The amount of soft landscaping that actually is maintained near the front of the property is pretty significant in terms of what I think it can do in terms of water penetration, and then we have the ravine lands right behind. So I don't think that this is a site where, being a little below, actually is going to contribute to those environmental issues.
I would point out that the amount of green space has been constrained by virtue of the building coming out, right?
Exactly.
And it is a concern that the community and the Ratepayers Association raised.
No, no, absolutely. Yeah, I'm just giving my own two cents on why it would be minor in this instance. But, yeah, I'm happy to put forward a motion to approve this application, but I would like to include a condition that we tie it to the site plan, which does mention the green buffer and mentions the shrubs to be planted in that buffer. So I would like to move to approve this, but tie it to the... The site plan also includes some of the comments that were worked out with the Ratepayers Association about the fenced-off play area. So I would move to approve this, subject to tying it to the site plan, forestry conditions two and three, and the condition that the parking area and walkways be constructed with permeable pavers.
That's great. Thank you very much. So we have a motion from Mr. Gosch to that effect, seconded by Mr. Bissonnet. All in favor, you have your approval. Thank you very much, and thank you, folks, for coming down. All right. Let's move on to item number three. 148 to 158 Avenue Road and 220 to 234 Davenport Road. This is an application to alter the development standards for a thirty-five-story mixed-juice building and increasing building heights and gross floor area, as well as modifying the parking space requirements from ratios to a total number. Related site plan control application is currently under review. Committee has before to copy plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations revised. Diagram three received December, September the ninth. Covering letter from the agent, previous decision number affecting the subject property, and Arbus report, planning rationale, presentation materials from the agent, a shadow study, transportation study, and the site-specific zoning bylaw affecting the subject property. We have email correspondence from Transportation Services, staff reports from Heritage, Urban Design Heritage, and from community planning. We have correspondence and concern from the A B C Residents Association and the Greater Yorkville Residents Association and the Annex Residents Association.
Through you, Mr. Chair. We do have the agent here in person, but before we hear from the agent, I just want the members to turn their attention to the screen. We did receive a letter from the councillor's office in support of this application.
All right. Mr. Bronskill, good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Good morning to the panel. Last name is Bronskill, first initial D for David, 333 Bay Street, Suite 3400 here in Toronto, as the agent for the applicant. I'm joined by Mr. Grignier from Bowes Fields here at the table. I'm gonna be doing the speaking, but if there were some planning matters that come up, we just wanted to have him available, but we're not putting up a second speaker. We understand we've got the five minutes. I do like the chair's shirt, not to guilt the lily. I just realize that.
You gotta believe.
I do have one revision, Mr. Chair, to the application flowing out of the planning staff memo. They've recommended deletion of variance number six. We're happy to accept that recommendation. It's a bit of an odd variance that we were including to ensure that there was permission for stacked parking spaces. Through the discussions with staff, they've indicated they don't think that variance is required, so we're happy to delete variance six, as it appears on the public hearing notice.
All right, sir. Thank you very much. We don't have anyone listed to speak, but we did get the letter from the RAs, so maybe you could take us through it.
Yeah, and what I propose to do is, Mr. Chair, I will flag, we are supportive, there's a condition recommended from Heritage, which we're supportive of. There's a condition recommended from planning for an updated pedestrian-level wind study. We are supportive of that. We're actually in receipt of the letter from the various residents associations with thanks. It's, I would actually characterize it as a positive letter. We've worked with them both through the original rezoning process, and my client has worked with them now through this variance process. Their letter mentions a number of important public benefits that are being achieved through this development. They aren't things that would be conditions on the variances, but I will tell the committee, and I will confirm here on the public record for any of the residents associations that are listening, they are being secured through agreements and through other means, and they are important to the residents' support of the proposal overall. So I do want to flag those public benefits that are listed in that letter and make sure I just confirm publicly my client's commitment to them. For example, one of them is picking up properties on the east side of Avenue Road that will form off-site parkland dedication, that will open up the entrance to one of the best parks in the city, for sure, one of the best parks in the downtown, and so have a better entranceway off Avenue Road, not strictly speaking tied to these variances, but certainly tied to this development, and so an important thing to be achieved. So we thank them for that letter, and the councillor and her letter, which I did look at this morning, references that as well. Mr. Chair, if I could, what I would probably focus on, subject to questions you may have, is do two things. One, give you a very quick introduction to what's being proposed, but I'd like to focus on what I think is the only disagreement with the planning staff memo, who, they're otherwise in support of the variances, with the exception of how the parking spaces might be deployed in the building. So I'll come back to that in a moment. But what we are here seeking are some variances that would add three stories to the proposal. It would increase overall the number of parking spaces. It is a redesign of a project that, frankly, in today's market, would be problematic as approved, but is being redesigned to actually, although the height's going up, reduce the number of units. Hundred and thirty-four residential units, they would be a hundred and twenty-two bedroom units, fourteen three-bedroom units. So let me just do that again. A hundred and thirty-four residential units, all two and three bedrooms. So a very different project than we might have seen five, six, seven years ago, coming through the process, and certainly very different than this project was going through at the time when there were more, contemplating more one-bedroom and even bachelor units. So larger units that would be characterized under the official plan as family-sized units. Planning staff have gone through everything. Their memo indicates no concerns with the variances related to height. The one, they haven't related, they haven't addressed any concern related to the overall parking supply. What they have asked this committee to do is, if you see fit to grant the variances, ensure that any additional parking above the ratios is provided only in the form of stackers. So I'm just gonna do that again, because it's a bit convoluted. I'm not accusing staff of being convoluted. I'm characterizing the dispute as being convoluted. They're not saying that the increased parking supply is objectionable to them. And I will also point you to the Transportation Services email. They've reviewed it. They have no concerns with the parking rates. What they are saying is, if you're going to do this, we don't want to have any additional levels of underground parking. We want you to do it in stackers. That's a problem for us. I can't accept that condition. And it's a problem because, in terms of the way these hundred and thirty-four residential units will eventually be used, having those spaces in stackers is problematic. Freestanding spaces versus stacking spaces are just different, I'm gonna say, commodities out there, and it does represent a real problem for us. I will say, it's also a distinction without a difference, if I can understand the planning staff concern, and I'm gonna say two things in that regard. We did a transportation memo. We have indicated in that transportation memo, as accepted by staff, that the number of... by staff, that the number of trips generated through this proposal, despite the increased height, is less. So although we have more parking, we're having fewer trips. So from an environmental perspective, this proposal's actually better. There will be capacity for more cars, but there will actually be a decline in the number of trips coming from the site versus the site-specific approval. That's a good thing in terms of the environment. That's what our transportation consultants concluded. City's transportation staff have accepted that. Final thing I'll say, Mr. Chair, because I know my five minutes are up, we did a comparison in terms of our as-of-right parking ratios, if we did what I would think of as a typical building from, say, five years ago. 10% bachelor, 51% one-bedroom, 30% two-bedroom, 10% three-bedroom. So the type of mix you might have seen in these projects four or five years ago. When we did this, I'm going to give you the number that was spit out in terms of the parking. This was not manufactured. That's a very typical ratio. The parking coming out of that, 269 spaces. I'm asking for a maximum of 268. So the ratios, if we had done a typical condo from five, six years ago, would have had a max parking of 269. I have fewer units, 134. Fewer vehicular trips, 268 parking spaces. It's almost an identical number of spaces. And so rather than putting 150 spaces in stackers, we're just asking to have the same garage that we might have had under the as-of-right. And so I just, I, I would urge the committee not to put that condition on. We just don't think it's a necessary condition. We don't think it's based in policy. It's a real problem for the overall proposal, and it really isn't anything different than what we've got approved under the site-specific bylaw in terms of the actual form of the development. So I, I went over my five. I know there may be questions, but thank you.
So let me just unpack that a little bit. Are you proposing to excavate deeper as a result?
It would be, yes. So this, this is what's, this is what's interesting about the bylaw. Maybe deeper. So we may still do some stackers. It's just, I can't commit to what would be about 150 stackers under the condition recommended by city planning. The zoning proposal was approved at about four, maybe five stories. If we did the 269 spaces with that unit mix, as-of-right under the bylaw, that would have been six to seven levels of parking. The zoning bylaw itself does not regulate the number of levels of parking, right? So the bylaw's silent on that. It's just the ratios. So if I'd done 10% bachelors with a size over 45 square meters, 51% one-bedroom, 30% two-bedroom, 10% three-bedroom, pretty typical mix, my maximum permission would have been 269 spaces. That would have been six to seven levels permitted by the bylaw. I could have done that as-of-right. What we're doing is saying, we're at 134 units. The ratios kick in, would spit out a lower maximum. That's a maximum that doesn't work for the mix that we're seeking of 122 bedrooms and 14 three-bedrooms. The mix that works is 268 residential parking spaces. That could be six or seven levels. But that's the same as what I would have done as-of-right under the bylaw with a typical mix.
So if, as, as you're proposing us not to accept that planning condition, then if you were to proceed, would you need to amend the existing site-specific zoning bylaw if you went down to seven stories?
No.
So you have, you have, you currently have permissions to, under the existing approval, to go down seven?
I would, I would phrase it slightly differently, Mr. Chair. I have no restriction on my levels of underground.
Right.
So it, so it doesn't say two, it doesn't say four, it doesn't say six or seven. Like, I don't want to mislead the committee, but there is no zoning provision that restricts the levels of underground. And so I could have done 269 spaces under the bylaw with a typical condo mix, six or seven levels.
So this is kind of unfair, but if you could, if I could ask you, do you, would you be able to characterize the nature of planning's concern about the deeper excavation?
I, I, I can only go with what's in the staff report and with what some of the discussions were.
It's about embedded carbon for the...
Yeah. It says environmental and construction impacts associated with extensive underground parking. That's what it says. There's no policy pointed to in the memo, in fairness to my client, so it's a bit of an abstract question. I'm not sure embedded carbon in two or three more levels of underground is really that extensive. Certainly, they've done no analysis. And to be fair to, again, to my client, the planners aren't experts in that either. This is regulated by the building code. This is regulated by the TGS standards that will have to do through site plan approval. That's typically where you would regulate the garages. We've done geotech work as part of that site plan. We know where the water table is. We're going to have to work all of that out. We're comfortable with the geotech work that's been submitted already with the site plan application, and that was reviewed as part of the existing approval. And I would just flip it to what I said earlier as well. I think the impact of that, compared with what our trip generation rates are showing in this proposal, it's a better environmental outcome to have a building that may have more parking, but actually has fewer cars being driven out on the road. And that's what BA concluded, and that's what transportation staff have accepted. Real car environmental impacts, I'm going to suggest to this committee, aren't in the underground garage. They're in people getting in their cars and getting on the road, and the emissions coming out of those cars. And our transportation memo shows there will be fewer trips, which means that's actually a better environmental result for this development.
If, if you, going forward, would, would, with site plan approval, I mean, would you have to demonstrate, would there, would, would the city be able to refuse you going further depth?
No.
So site plan approval isn't like a fail-safe?
The, I shouldn't have been so cavalier in that response. In terms of applicable law under the building code, no. In terms of overall impacts, in terms of construction, site plan and building code, yes. So there will be practical considerations of the site plan and building permit process, that if, for example, constructing down, the geotechnical expert says, we're not doing that sixth level, we're not doing that seventh level, and you've got building code problems, we won't do it. And we'll have to put in some more stackers to make that parking work. So from a zoning perspective, no. From a practical perspective, yes.
Okay.
Phil?
Sorry.
Thank you. So I, I was just going to, on the embedded carbon, okay, never mind, actually. I, I think you've, you've answered it fairly well. It, it's unfortunate that there is no sort of analysis from city planning, because I, I take your point on the fewer trips, but fewer trips compared to, we have no information on what the subsoil here is. Is it bedrock? How much embedded carbon is there in excavating two or three more floors? And then your reduction in trips, how many years of that reduction in trip does this change, you know, if it's 100 years of reduction in trips will equal the embedded carbon? That's a different thing than if it's two years, but we, we just don't have that.
And, and, and if I, sorry, if I can jump in there, it would be an interesting analysis, and it may be something to look at long-term for the city in terms of building sustainable cities. The only thing I would say to that is, we're already, I, I would, I'm speculating, I'm outside my lane here, I apologize, but building four to five levels versus building six to seven levels, I don't, I just don't agree that that's an embedded carbon impact, based on all the projects I've worked on. Like, bringing out a couple more levels of underground parking, pouring a little bit more concrete, I, I, I don't, I don't accept the premise on this project that that's an impact. Now, let's do, let's speculate a little bit more outside my lane, no pun intended. If I had no parking, and I was now excavating down six to seven levels, I would, I would then be interested in that analysis of the trade-off, of having gone from none, no excavation, only having to put in my foundation and not going down to six or seven levels, I'd be very curious about what that trade-off would be versus, versus the reduced trips that I'm relying on.
Yeah. Well, anyway, we don't, we don't have it. So the, the, it would be speculation for me as well. The question I suppose I want to ask is, obviously, this is a very different building, and we're in a very different environment in terms of what's approvable. I think despite the fact that, you know, we do want to densify in the city, I actually think this is a, a better building, to have more family-sized units. So it's, my question is, is this much parking a requirement? Your, your client views this much parking to be a requirement for what's obviously now going to be a higher-end demographic that they're selling to?
Yeah. Through you, Mr. Chair. That's a fair question, and the answer is yes. They've looked at it very extensively. That's why they're seeking it, with this unit mix. The, the 268, it's a maximum. We may not build the 268. It's, there's some flexibility in there. It's, it's obviously related directly to the units at 134. I may not be able to do embedded carbon, but I can do 134 times two and get to 268, and do my math. That's where it's coming from. It's, it's that, it's that ability to have two spaces per unit, which is often a family, maybe a second car, maybe a kid with a car. It's, the, the trip generation is interesting. The site still has great transit access. It's 800 metres to two subway stations. It's not technically within a PMTSA, but you can walk to two subway stations. It's a great location in terms of the amenities. These resident associations live in incredible neighborhoods with great community services and facilities, and they care for their neighborhoods, too. And that's what these residents will be coming into, is there is walkability from the site. But the nature of the units are that people want to have their cars, they want to park them in their building, they don't want to park them on the street, they don't want to find alternate parking. That's, that's why this optionality has to be there for a building like this to work.
I have a follow-up question on that. If the trip generation model suggests that there will be significantly fewer trips, I'm just curious, how is it that that doesn't mesh well with stacked parking? If, if the volume of traffic coming in and out is less, why is it not feasible for some of that to be stacked?
So the, the, the interesting thing about the trip generation is, it's sort of, it's like, when I think of almost like grade-related housing, somebody may have two cars, they may have three cars, but they're only using it at certain times, and otherwise, they might be walking out to their main street to shop. So, but they have that car because they may be driving to hockey practice, they may be driving to piano lessons, they may be driving to grandma's house, so they want the car there and accessible. So the trip generation, I think, makes sense in terms of how these types of units with their occupants will, will use their units. And so that's why the chip, trip generation comes down. Whereas when you've got more units, and you may have a bachelor also with a car, that car gets used, the first car gets used more than the second car. If, if I'm answering your question, I hope I am. And if I've missed it, I'm happy to try again.
No, that's getting to the answer that I'm looking for. It's just a matter of, it doesn't quite add up for me that it wouldn't be appropriate to have, say, the second vehicle in a household than in a stacked space.
Oh, right. No, I understand. So some of the, sorry. So through you, Mr. Chair, some of the spaces will ultimately end up being in stackers. That's evidence on the variance that I asked the committee to delete. We were sort of looking to ensure that there was permission for about 35 spaces being in stackers. So there will be some in stackers. It's, the objection of the staff condition is that anything above, and we did the math, it really is about 150 spaces. So it would not only be all second cars, it would be some of the primary cars would be in stackers. And stackers serve a purpose. I think they will work for some of the households. They are also a bit more inconvenient. Yeah. Thank you. Sorry, I, I missed the stacking part of the question, so I appreciate it.
David, the minimum standards and parking standards are obviously changed dramatically over the last little while. And it's an unfair question, but would you say that six or seven stories below is common or uncommon for a building of this height?
I would say the pendulum has swung a little bit, and I think our approach to parking standards has swung a little bit, too. I would have said five, I'm going to go five to seven. I would have said five to seven, say, five to seven years ago, would have been more common. I then, I then think we started to come down, and we got to mid-rise buildings, two levels. A building of this scale, four, maybe five, but four would have been right in that sweet spot. I think what's happening with the parking standards is a really interesting conversation, in that we were, we were pushing for minimums to come down. That was in part because the condo market was a little bit the rental market. And so the investor ownership of condos meant that we didn't necessarily tie parking spaces to them, and a lot of those condos were being rented. So we saw the minimums coming down, we brought the maximums down with them. Now, I think, as we're coming out of the pandemic and looking at the market again, and these larger units, interestingly, which there hadn't been a market for, I mean, I remember arguing this 10, 12, 15 years ago, are now there in both mid-rise and tower buildings. And while the decreased minimum makes sense, we're probably now going to see on the pendulum, an adjustment on the maximums. And I think that's what we're seeing with this application, probably being one of the first wrestling with this. But I, I have had some conversations where I think we'll see others. So I think the pendulum that sort of swung us to low minimums, I now think we're going to have a bit of a swing back, where that, that divide between the minimum-maxims will change a little bit. And I think we'll see a few projects like this, where some of those older, more typical underground garages actually get built again.
Okay. Phil? Sorry. Now, let's set aside the whole parking issue entirely. I'd like to go to another variance, which is the only variance that sort of gave me, I, I won't say it's necessarily fatal, but gave me just a little bit of pause, which is the variance three, the over, overbuild of mechanical, you know, going up by, I, I don't remember exactly, but like an additional two metres, you know, and it's characterized as very small, but really, you know, really, it's an additional floor. And, you know, my view of mechanical penthouses and, and the zoning around them, you know, we, we often say we're not here really to deal with aesthetics, we're here to deal with zoning. But I think this zoning about, you know, how much overrun you can have, does have to do with the fact that these mechanical penthouses are a little unsightly. So it's kind of a give and take of, we'll give you your roofline to a certain height, we know you need some mechanical on top, but let's not make it so large. And so, you know, it is an additional two metres. What I sort of suspected, and I, I think I've confirmed in the plans, and maybe you can confirm for me, is a penthouse. So what's around that, and why should I not be concerned about this additional two metres of overrun?
The elevator overrun, so if I can ask, oh, great. That's, so there's, the yellow is the mechanical that would meet the bylaw, okay? And so the green is the elevator overrun, and that's the subject of the variance. And if staff don't mind also going to the next slide, we did a 3D, where, thank you very much, where you can see it as well. So the yellow actually meets the bylaw. It's the green that's the subject to the variance. It is related only to the elevator overrun, and it results actually from a couple of things. It does relate from the elevators coming up. It also relates from the fact that the way the floor plates are designed, and these being larger units, the elevators are actually themselves dispersed. So we don't have a traditional bank of elevators the way most condo or rental projects do. There's actually, I'm going to call it four corners. There's a lobby, and there, there is, there are some central elevators, but then there's also what I'm going to call four elevators that run up. And so each elevator, each unit, not only do you have the general elevators available for the public, but each unit has an elevator that will actually stop in a foyer of each of the units. So that relates to why there's that overall size of that overrun coming up. So it's a little bit more than the traditional core, because the elevators are actually spread out through the floor plates beyond being confined, confined to the traditional core. And then we need to bring the elevators up and have that little bit of extra overrun, because they've got to hit that top floor, and then coming up to be able to access the mechanical. So it's, it's a combination of the two things to result in that green. We think it's been stepped back, not just from the roofline, but also from the roofline of the mechanical. We don't think it's going to be seen. It'll obviously be well-designed through the site plan approval process, but it has been placed in a way where we're trying to make it as invisible as possible.
Okay, great. Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Thank you very much. All right. Let's go into committee. I thought that was, frankly, a very interesting and helpful conversation. I guess the, if, Phil, you're satisfied, I think, with the, the height of the building, it is kind of tucked back, it's set back from the upper story?
I'm satisfied they've made some efforts. I'm, I'm not entirely certain... I'm satisfied they've made some efforts. I'm, I'm not entirely certain that it's necessary to have an elevator in the mechanical penthouse, and that is what's popping it up, but it's, I'm, I'm, I'm not so concerned that it's a problem.
I think when you're looking at 35 stories and it's set back on the top, I'm not sure there's a, there's a visibility or shadowing issue associated with it.
The shadowing issue is, is minimal if there's any to that, so I'm not concerned about the shadowing. It's more about visibility, and somewhere like Yorkville, it might not be visible from the ground, but it probably will be visible from the other surrounding condos.
Okay. Anyone else on that one? I want to turn our attention to the parking issue once they're going fine with the variance. Okay, so let's talk about the parking issue. The agent has, I think, done a good job of at least explaining the rationale for the request not to include the planning condition with respect to stacked parking. So what do you guys, what do you guys think?
I'm, I'm supportive of not imposing the conditions. I've been, I think, the need for flexibility in this market to get something that's desirable, which is densification with larger units, makes sense to me. And I'm also fairly convinced that the same reason why staff are concerned about embedded carbon, which is that it can be very costly, you know, very time-consuming, from a construction perspective to dig additional floors, also has a cost impact on the developer, and they're not going to dig down more than they need to make the building marketable. If they're gonna dig down the minimum amount to make it marketable, that's why they want the ability to have stackers, if stackers are what they can sell. So I, I'm, I, I'm not concerned about those conditions.
Yeah, and I think, you know, minimum parking standards are also, while an important urban development and design feature, they're also a cost-cutting measure for development industry. So I get that. Personally, I agree with you. I, I, I mean, at the end of the day, frankly, if city staff are so vociferously opposed to this, they will take the next step, and we'll let them do that. But I, I found myself convinced by a reasonable argument around this, this issue. And we're not totally eliminating stackers, we are just reducing the number. And I think that still speaks, Katie, to the point you made. And this is in a neighborhood which obviously will support a little higher-end kind of residence and condo. And it's good to see the higher mix associated with it. And I think the argument that was made with respect to the additional underground parking seems reasonable. I look at it, even though we are evolving in our perspective on underground parking, I thought the agent made an interesting observation about how that might evolve even further and take into consideration that, that there might be a different kind of perspective on this going forward. So I, and the fact that, you know, six, seven underground stories is not uncommon, frankly, in condominium, large condominium developments in the past. So I don't think it's terribly out of character. So I, I, I too think it's a supportable to not impose. And there is a recourse if, if the powers that be feel that's not appropriate. But in this instance, I'm, I'm fine with it.
Although if, for whoever does want to put forward a motion, I think we should eliminate the variance six that was agreed, that, yeah, or consider it as amended.
All right. Anyone else want to speak to this item, or can we go to a motion? All right. Who wants to take a motion? Phil, since you're on a roll?
Sure. Okay, yeah, glad to. I was going to let someone else take the opportunity. But no, I, I'm happy to, to make a motion and, you know, and giving my reasons just on the mechanical penthouse issues, since I have raised it, you know, it, it was a concern maybe on the zoning bylaw, but in terms of the other three aspects of the test, it's obviously very minor. The impact is minor. The, you know, it achieves the objectives of the official plan, et cetera. And so I, I, I think it's, on balance, it's minor and meets the four tests as well. So I would move to approve this application. I would say as amended, since council was withdrawing variance six. Rather than to refuse variance six, we'll say as amended without variance six, subject to the heritage conditions and subject to no other conditions.
Community planning win-study.
Yeah.
Oh, yes.
That condition, I believe they agreed to.
So not number two, but number three?
Yes. Okay, thank you. Subject to the win-study.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Gosh with those conditions. Do I have a seconder? Mr. Bissonnet, all in favor? You have your approval. Thank you. Thank you for the discussion, and I apologize to all those awaiting. That took a long time, but it was actually quite a fascinating discussion for the panel. All right. We move on to item number four. 2010 to 2016 Bathurst. This is an application to alter the development standards for an eight-story mixed-use building by constructing a vestibule for the elevator on the mechanical penthouse level, which will lead to a rooftop amenity space. Committee has before to copy plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevation, rooftop plans submitted by the agent, four photographs of the subject property, a covering letter from the agent, previous decision number affecting the subject property, draft plan of condominium, condominium of survey submitted by the agent, and two site-specific zoning bylaws affecting the subject property.
Through you, Mr. Chair. We have the agent online and no registered speakers.
Okay.
David, you've been unmuted?
Yes. Good, good morning, Mr. Chair, members of committee. David Mackay with MHBC, a registered professional planner, 7050 Western Road, Vaughan, Ontario, L4L8G7.
Great. Thank you very much, sir. Hang on a second. Panel, does anyone need a presentation? This is a fairly straightforward application dealing with a elevator and a vestibule. Anyone need a presentation? Anyone have any questions? None. Sir, we've read your application. We're familiar with the material. We don't really need a presentation today. Is there anything you'd like to share with the panel before we take it into committee for a decision?
No, sir. It's, as you said, it's very straightforward. It was an issue that was caught through the building permit review, and we're just trying to rectify that to finalize the occupancy of the building in terms of, in the use of that amenity space.
Okay. Great. Thanks, sir. All right. We're in committee. Anyone want to, Nellie?
I would bring a motion to approve this application. No conditions. I don't see.
Okay. Motion by Ms. Volport to approve, seconded by Mr. Bissonnet. All in favor? You have your approval, sir. Thank you. Anyone need a five-minute break? Okay. Take five? Okay. We resume with item number five. 87 Strathmore Boulevard. This is an application to alter the existing two-story semi-detached dwelling by constructing a rear two-story addition with a ground-floor deck. Committee has before to copy plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevation, seven photographs of the subject property, a previous decision affecting the subject property. There are staff reports from TTC.
Through you, Mr. Chair. We have the agent online and no registered speakers.
Okay.
Good morning. Yes, I'm Mr. Chairman and committee adjustment members. My name is Duing. Is like an agent from AT Design Inc. We located at 5576 Yonge Street.
Great. Thank you very much, ma'am. Just hang on a second, panel. This is FSI only. I think it's fairly straightforward. Does anyone need a presentation? See none? Ma'am, we've read your application. We're familiar with the material. We don't need a presentation today. Is there anything you'd like to share with the panel before we take it into committee for a decision?
No, sir. That's, you said, very straightforward, and just one item on.
Okay. All right. We're in committee. And just a modest increase in FSI.
Yeah, I can put forward a motion.
Ryan?
Yes, I can put forward a motion to approve this variance. Do, I see?
There's a TTC condition.
Yeah, three TTC conditions, so subject to TTC conditions, number one, two, and three.
I think it's number one, one, three, and five.
One, three, and five. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Bissonnet to approve with those conditions, seconded by Ms. Plazer. All in favor? You have your approval. Thank you. Okay. Next item is number six. And this is 77 Chestnut Park. This is an application to alter the existing three-story detached dwelling by constructing a rear two-story addition. Committee has before to copy plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevation, seven photographs of trees on the subject property, a previous decision affecting the subject property, a tree protection plan. We have email correspondence from Heritage Preservation Services. We have correspondence in support from 84 Chestnut, 135 Roxborough, 147 Roxborough, 155 Roxborough, and 65 Chestnut. We have correspondence in support also from 78 Chestnut.
Through you, Mr. Chair. We have the agent here in person and no registered speakers.
Oh, hello there. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and members of committee. It's Sean McGaffey, WND Associates, 47 Roseland Avenue, Toronto, Ontario, M4R1E5.
Great, Sean. You, you, this is a fairly straightforward application, but since you came down, do you want to give us like a one-minute overview?
Sure. I, I can give you a very brief overview. It's a length variance and a depth variance. It's basically, if I can classify it as converting a bay window into a, a small bump-out extension to align with the existing rear main wall. It's an A-rated property in South Rosedale on a triple lot. It's been reviewed by Heritage Planning, Forestry. We undertook extensive consultation with the neighbors, hand-delivered letters to everyone, even including outside the committee of adjustment notice radius, and have no concerns. of adjustment notice radius, and have no concerns with anything raised so far.
Okay, it appears to be a huge lot.
Yes, I think the actual lot, the corner piece itself is a double lot, and then there's an additional lot to the south that's also included.
Okay, thank you, any questions panel? None, thank you, all right, let's take it into committee, Nellie?
Again, looking at the depth and the, you know, size of the lot, it's, it's pretty substantial, so those, those little, you know, two variances that we have, I consider that a minor, it won't change anything, especially we have all the neighbors in agreement, so I would bring in motion to approve it, and I don't see any conditions.
Yep, motion by Ms. Volport to approve, seconded by Mr. Bisanette, all in favor, have your approval, thank you for coming down. Item number seven is four-eighty-three Roxton Road, this is an application to alter the existing two-and-a-half-story semi-detached dwelling by constructing a complete third-story addition, a rear three-story addition, with a ground floor, ground level deck with stairs and a rear third-story balcony, as well as a front partially-covered porch with stairs, also to construct a rear two-story detached ancillary building abutting the laneway containing one-car garage and amenity space on the second level. The existing one-story detached ancillary building will be demolished, committee has before it, copy of plan of survey, site plan, floor plans and elevations, three photographs of subject property, we have covering letter from the agent, an arborist report, tree protection plan, revised site plan, floor plans and elevations, received October sixteenth, red line public notice received October sixteenth, and revised zoning notice received October sixteenth, and a covering letter on the revised application from the agent. We have email correspondence from Transportation Services and a staff report from Urban Forestry, we also have correspondence in opposition from four-eighty-five and six, four-eighty-five Roxton and six-eighty-two Shaw Street.
Through you, Mr. Chair, we have the agent here in person and one other speaker here in person.
Okay, good morning, sir.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the committee. Peter Milchin, acting as agent for the owner, one-ninety-two Lake Shore Road West, Mississauga, L-five-H, one-G-six. Mr. Chair, this application is...
Sir, before you go in, can we just walk the panel through the changes you're making on the red line notice?
Yes.
You okay? You were gonna do that, right?
I was going to do that.
You were gonna do that, okay.
Yes, yes, sir. So, as the chair mentioned, the application is to construct additions to the existing dwelling, and to demolish the existing garage and replace the garage with a new garage and a second-level amenity space. To speak to the changes that were submitted on October sixteenth, these were related to the ancillary structure, and they came about from discussions between our arborists, urban forestry and community planning. The issue is to do as much as possible to protect the, the tree in the rear yard of this property, by shifting, it proposed to shorten the garage somewhat, and by doing so, it would reduce the setback, or increase the setback from the laneway, from point three-something to the proposed point six-one, and would also increase the separation distance between the main dwelling and the garage, this also has the impact of reducing the footprint and the floor space of the ancillary building. So, Mr. Chair, the main structure is, is fairly straightforward, it's a semi-detached building approximately a hundred years old, the other half of the semi-detached property constructed similar additions a couple of years ago, third-floor expansion addition at the rear, so what we're proposing is very consistent with what was done there. It is a lot line, side lot line to lot line construction, which is what the existing dwelling is, certainly at the front of the property, so we're continuing that, I don't believe it has any impact on, on any of the neighbors greater than any impact that, that already exists. The dwelling depth, as an example, is seventeen-point-one meters, it's just over the bylaw, I think it's quite reasonable what we're proposing with the main house, and it's consistent with the, the neighborhood. The ancillary structure, there are five variances for the ancillary structure, and this is the more unusual aspect of this application. So, the existing garage is in a state of disrepair that renders it essentially unusable, needs to be rebuilt. The owner is proposing to rebuild the garage with one parking space that he will use, and he's requesting an additional second-floor loft, if you will, as an amenity space so that he could use it as, as quiet office space when, when working from home. The main dwelling is not a, a large house, it's quite small, although it's being enlarged substantially, so we think this is reasonable. If that ancillary structure were an actual laneway house, the only variance being sought would have been the rear setback from the laneway, otherwise it would be compliant with the laneway house requirements of the zoning bylaw. We have a couple of letters of objection, so the, the one letter of objection from the neighbor to the north at four-eighty-five, I'm sorry, but his concerns about traffic congestion and, and parking are frankly irrelevant, there, there is one parking space there now, there will be one parking space afterwards, and the property is being developed as a single-family home with just one residential unit in it. Issues around loss of light, again, it's a very tight urban area, he also references the garage alignment, but unfortunately, I guess he, he didn't see the, the updated application, which has increased the proposed setback from, from the rear laneway. Concerns about the bathroom windows, there are no bathroom windows proposed in this property, there is a window on the ground floor near the kitchen, and there is a window on the second floor in one of the bedrooms. The other letter of objection from Shaw Street, which is the property, I guess on the other side of the laneway, away from, from this property, the main concern is about a hydropole, the, the objector's sketch is inaccurate, the hydropole is actually right on the lot, rear lot line, partially inside this property's lot line, with the increased setback that we're proposing for the ancillary structure, there will be at least about point four-five or eight meters or eighteen inches between the pole and the building. If site conditions require it, then obviously we could adjust the location of the garage and set it a little bit further back, that would not impact any of the variances if they are approved, because if we were to increase the setback a little bit more, there, there's no impact on, on the variances. I suggest that the application does meet the four tests under the Planning Act, and that it is consistent with the pattern of development in the neighborhood.
Great, thank you, sir, panel, any questions, we have a speaker? Do we have a speaker? Yes, we do, okay, thank you. All right. Oh, you're here, okay. Is that, are you, is that microphone on, or is it close to you? Maybe you could sit in the other chair, yeah, that's perfect. Name and address, please, sir.
My name is Gabriel Papel, I'm living at four-eighty-five Roxton Road, I'm the neighbor towards the, the north, and the reason, the reason I'm here today, because I see, by the way, we received the letter the day, the fourteen, October, and the, the last day to send recommendations was on the fifteen, because the, the, the strike and the, and the mail, and we have very little time to discuss this, but what I, my concern I have, and there's, the, the neighbors wants to expand the, the basement, they wants to expand the house, he wants to move out from where the original house is, and come to the property line, without leaving me with no space, you're not allowed to open any windows unless you have three feet back, and according with them, they want to open the windows right on the property line. Also, I took a look, and we have, they're gonna do an extension of almost forty feet high, plus sixty-five, almost sixty-five feet long, extension wall that comes to the property line, and this is, I'm gonna be living like in a tunnel, with no light, and, and, and nothing, you could access to my, I have three, four other windows on my side, I got the living room, I got the, the kitchen, and I have the, the dining room, then, when I'm, if they're gonna build this, when I'm in my house, I have to put lights on because it's dark. Up on the roof, I have a little canopy sticking out from the roof, that is gonna be almost touching the, what they're gonna build, then they're gonna build forty, almost forty feet high, and the, the neighbors, my neighbors, they, they did the construction, but they kept the step back, they don't went up to the property line. Also, they're gonna go down, they're gonna go down eight, almost nine feet, and the basement right is very close to my house, are the, are they gonna dig under my house because my house is not eight feet deep? They're gonna be digging below that, then they want to extend the basement, they want to extend, as other neighbors, they, they, they wanna put windows, they did a square in their own houses, and they build, they put windows, I'm, I'm not allowed to have windows on the property line, you gotta have at least three feet. The other thing I wanna bring, the neighbors, they did exactly the same renovation, and they, they kept all the lines properly, the way was, my house was built in nineteen hundreds, is the first house was built on, on the, was just farmland, this house was built in nineteen-thirty, okay, my house was already there when this one come after, okay? I live in this street for forty-five years, I know what's going on, okay? The other thing I wanna bring, they even went past the neighbor, the neighbor stopped to a line, and they even went past that, they wanna minimize the, the backyard they have, the backyard will be very small, also the tree that grows in there, in the backyard, is right, the, the, all the roots and everything, it goes to underneath the garage, plus, you wanna, plus you wanna, you wanna build an extension, we have a high school on the end of the street, okay? And over the years, I've been seeing, you're gonna make like a square outside my garage and the neighbor's garage, that's where the kids come in to smoke, they don't smoke good things, okay? And then I wanna tell you, because we smell it, we smell it, and I don't wanna have a box outside my garage, that is gonna be like a, a future washroom, also, because we see the kids coming over, and the other thing, they wanna bring the garage eighteen feet high, that means if they go underneath the, the post, where the post is, they're gonna be touching the wires, they're gonna be touching the wires and all the communication lines, okay? That's, the other thing I wanna say, my property is all free by itself, is no, my fence is on my fence, is on my property, is nothing to do where the neighbors are, okay? And one more thing, you gotta, we gotta keep some privacy too, they, from the, from wherever they're gonna be, the, the roof is higher than the neighbors, why they gotta go higher than the neighbors? It's crazy, then, if they respect the, the rules of the other house, I'm okay with that, but it needs to be staying on the same length or the houses, the original houses.
All right, sir, thank you very much, panel, any questions to the speaker? Thank you very much for coming down, sir. All right, Mr. Milchin?
So, Mr. Chair, I want to point out some aspects of, of the proposal that address the gentleman's concerns. The extension of dwelling depth, one point one meters more than the bylaw requires, is only at the ground floor and basement levels. The second level, the depth on the second level is sixteen-point-four-nine meters, and the depth on the third floor is fourteen-point-zero-six meters. So, as the gentleman said, you know, stepping back at the rear of the house, that is exactly what is being proposed with this application. The existing dwelling is a semi-detached dwelling, which, as the gentleman said, was built in the nineteen thirties, and it was built with zero sideyard setbacks for the first thirty or so feet of, of the dwelling, so yes, there was some setback for the rearmost portion of the building, but as the, the other half of, of the semi-detached built to the lot line, we're proposing the, the same thing. The rear yard will be almost seven-point-nine meters deep between the rear yard and the ancillary structure, so it's not, it's not a deficient rear yard by any stretch of the imagination, or certainly in terms of the zoning bylaw. There will be some, some balconies at the rear, but they're facing the rear, if there's some concern about screening the sides of, of that, that, that could be addressed. The windows, I'm not the designer of the project, but we have a highly skilled and reputable designer, and they've designed the structure with windows that would comply with the Ontario Building Code. So, I don't, if you have some further questions for me, I, I think I've addressed the comments made by the gentleman.
All right, thank you, sir, panel, any questions? Yes, Nellie?
With regards to variance number one, and you have again, the four-story balcony, which I understand that gonna trigger some privacy concerns, will it be open to a place privacy screen on, on the floor balcony? And I think it's to the north only.
Yes.
Because other side is, you know, it's a semi-detached, so.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, anyone else? No questions? The, I was just looking at the north elevation of your addition, so there's a, there's a window there, it looks like on the second floor?
There is a window proposed on the ground floor.
The ground floor, sorry, it looks like it was up higher.
No, it's, you see at the, I don't know if you'd call it the back or the front of the kitchen, but it says thirty-six inch diameter round window, that is on the ground floor plan, then on the second floor...
Right, that's one of them.
There is a bedroom number two, and that has a, a window proposed.
That has, pardon me?
And there is a window proposed for that bedroom.
Yeah, so, again, just in, in the context of privacy, that's a, that's a bedroom, does that actually look over the neighbors? He's very concerned about privacy.
Well, it does, it does look over to the neighbor's property, I, unfortunately, I don't have any drawings or photos of his property.
Yeah.
So, I don't know if it aligns with a window on his side or not, I mean, certainly there are measures that can be taken to, to enhance the privacy of a window.
I mean, if you're open to that, I think that might not be a bad thing as well, I mean, I wouldn't necessarily say suggest frost all of it, maybe the lower, if it's a double hung, maybe the lower portion of the double hung window.
That would certainly be an acceptable solution, if that's an issue.
All right, panel, anything else? Nothing? Okay, let's go into committee. What's everyone think? Nellie?
So, with regards to privacy, I, I think, you know, if... So with regards to privacy, I, I think, you know, if we can condition on the privacy, sorry, privacy screen on the per floor balcony, and as you suggested, the second floor bedroom win, window, you know, I would, wouldn't have any problems with the, the main dwelling, but I do have concerns about the ancillary building. So it's, with regards to variances seven to eleven, so I just don't, and again, it's not a, you know, garden suite, it's just a garage with the, my extra floor, and I just, to, to me, it looks a bit too, too much. It's, you know, the massing of the ancillary building. So I would support the, you know, the main, you know, variances for the main building, but I would, I would suggest to refuse variances seven through eleven for the ancillary building.
We didn't really talk about the ancillary building, but I'm glad you raised that. Anyone else have any thoughts on, on that? Yes?
Yeah, I would echo Nellie on that. My questions, I, I have questions about the comparison between that built structure and a laneway suite, given that it's not providing a housing unit. I don't think that's a fair comparison. And I do think that the height may be a little bit too much massing in comparison to what exists adjacently. I also wonder about the overlook from the second story windows in the garage. They'd be looking back towards the house as well as into the yards. So I'd like to support Nellie's suggestion that those variances may warrant some further consideration.
Okay. Anyone else? Phil?
I, I take a somewhat contrary view in that I, I agree that, you know, laneway suite is not the same as an ancillary building with an additional use. You know, laneway suites get additional zoning because they're doing the good of providing a unit. But I also see this as a very dense urban neighbourhood, close to a subway. I don't fault property owners for wanting to make the most use of their properties, and it, it's a property, you know, along the laneway, there is going to be redevelopment of other units into laneway suites as time goes on. I, I don't see the use of the second floor, you know, putting a second floor to a garage to be an office or a gym as all that intrusive on the neighbours in, in, in this context. And, and the overlook, I, will not be that significant in the sense that it won't be used as a, as a dwelling unit. So personally, I, I look at the proposal as a whole in the context of this neighbourhood as being minimally impacting.
Okay. Thank you. Ryan?
I agree with much of, with much of that has been said. I don't have a problem with this proposal. I understand impacts from development to neighbours, and I do appreciate the comments from the neighbour, but overall, the project is desirable and supportable.
Okay. Typically, I, I, I'm always a bit of an, an opponent of two-story ancillary buildings. And in part, just as you mentioned, there is a public good that is delivered when this is a laneway suite that goes beyond, I think, just, you know, the, the massing that impacts it. I frankly would have liked to have seen something that might have mitigated the massing, or might have been an opportunity for some angular planes here that might have actually minimized the massing a little bit without compromising, I don't think, the practicality of the second So I am, I, but in this instance, I, I think the, the context is important. This is a, this is a tight urban, I sort of agree with Phil on this one, the, that the location is a little bit different than the ones that we would typically see. So I, I, I don't think I'm going to oppose this one for that reason. I, I would suggest that, you know, if the panel ends up approving this, that it, it be on the condition that the, it not be used for habitable space, because this is not a laneway suite, and it, it shouldn't be converted without the proper variances or approvals being put in place. Okay, so I'll look for a motion.
Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll move to approve the application, subject to there being privacy screening on the third floor balcony to the, which side are we looking at?
North side. Well, again, does it, does it project out over the, the adjoining semi? Or no?
I don't believe that it does.
Doesn't?
Just to the north side.
Okay.
And, sorry, just to help me craft my motion, Nellie, I might have missed, what was your, was there also a second story privacy?
Yes, there is a second window, second floor.
Okay, that it be constructed?
I think what we did, we suggested, Phil, was that the, they're double hung windows, so the lower, the lower half of the double hung window be opaque.
Okay, yeah. So I, I would add that condition as well. Subject to those two conditions, in forestry number two, I move to approve it.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Are you also going to add no habitable space on the second level of the ancillary building?
Well, to the secretary treasurer, what effect would that have? Would it, does habitable space just mean bedroom?
Can't sleep there.
Or?
Like a residential dwelling unit.
Okay, but it wouldn't restrict them from using it as an office or gym, as they intend?
No.
Okay, then yes.
And there's no sleeping in the office at night.
Yeah. So this is.
And at any point in time.
When you're an American, you can only sleep on the couch that's in the house.
Only during the day.
And at any point in time, if they do choose to add a residential dwelling unit, they'll have to go through the necessary procedures.
Approval for, to make it a laneway suite.
Exactly.
Yeah. Okay, yes, I'll add that condition as well.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Gosh to that effect.
Sorry, and this is as amended?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Do I have a second, or? Mr. Bissonnet, all in favor? Opposed? Motion is approved, and the, it carries the motion as, the application is approved. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Approaching.
All right. Move on to item number eight. Seven Trenton. This is an application to alter the existing two-and-a-half story detached dwelling by extending the rear second story balcony, also to construct a new one-story detached ancillary building in the rear yard. Committee has before it, copy of plan of survey, site plan, floor plans and elevations, four photographs of trees on the subject property, and a staff report from community planning.
Through you, Mr. Chair. We have the agent online and no registered speakers.
Okay. Good morning. It's actually good afternoon.
Roberta, you've been unmuted?
Good afternoon.
Name and address, please, ma'am.
Roberta Honeyford, seven Trenton Avenue.
Okay, so you, this is a fairly straightforward application, ma'am. Does anyone need a presentation? We, okay? Phil, you okay? Yeah, I'm fine. All right. Ma'am, we don't need a presentation today. We've read your application, we're familiar with the material. Is there anything you'd like to share with the panel before we take it into committee for a decision?
I'm in full agreement of having privacy screening on the second floor balcony, east and west sides.
Okay, that's the planning condition?
Yes.
All right. All right, thank you, ma'am. Any questions, panel? You all good?
I can do a motion.
Okay, we're in committee. Ryan?
Yeah, so motion to approve, subject to planning condition number one, privacy screening.
Okay, motion by Mr. Bissonnet to approve with that condition, seconded by Ms. Blazer, all in favor. You have your approval. Thank you. Move on to item number nine. Sixty-five Rose Park Drive. This is an application to alter the existing two-and-a-half story detached dwelling by constructing a new front covered porch with roof overhang canopy extension and stairs. The existing front cover porch will be demolished. Committee has before to copy of plan of survey, site plan, floor plans and elevations, four photographs of trees on the subject property, previous decision affecting the subject property, and presentation materials from the agent, two form letters in support from fifty-nine and sixty-seven Rose Park Drive.
Through you, Mr. Chair. We have the agent online and no registered speakers.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Chair and members of the committee.
Oh, sorry, ma'am, we can hardly hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry, just settings.
Are you there?
Is this better?
Yes, much better. Thank you.
Okay. Good afternoon, Chair and members of the committee. My name is Andrea Duraso from Replacement Design, located at one sixty, the West Way, Unit sixteen A in Etobicoke. I'm here today on behalf of the property owners at sixty-five Rose Park Drive.
Great, ma'am. Panel, anyone need a presentation? Ma'am, we appreciate the presentation materials you sent in, they're very good. We've read all the material, we're familiar with the application. We don't really need a presentation today. Is there anything you'd like to share with the panel before we take it into committee for a decision?
No. As you mentioned, the request is straightforward, and we have support from the neighbours.
Right. Now, you have a question, Nellie?
A question, just to confirm for me, the front porch, you know, the line of the setback, is it in line with the neighbours?
In line with the neighbours in which aspect? Sorry?
Yeah, you have the neighbours to the, I'm, I'm sorry, I might confuse the direction, but to the left.
Well, we have a, we can look at the site plan, you mean the average front side yard setback?
Front, front yards setback.
Um, yes, it's in line with the neighbours.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? No? Okay, let's take this into committee. Barely straightforward, Phil?
Yeah, I, I quite like porches. I think they're characteristic of the city. I, sometimes I'm disappointed by how many become enclosed. This isn't that, this is taking a small porch, making it larger. It's certainly minor, and I would approve it.
Motion to approve, no conditions by Mr. Gosh, seconded by Ms. Volport, all in favor. You have your approval, sir, ma'am. Thank you. Next item is three forty-five Sunnyside Ave. This is an application to alter the existing two-and-a-half story detached dwelling by constructing a rear two-story addition to alter the existing two-and-a-half story, oh, that's, repeat, and rear ground floor deck with stairs. The existing one-story ancillary building in the rear yard will be maintained and unaltered. Committee has before to copy of the plan of survey, site plan, floor plans and elevations, three photographs of the front and rear yards of the subject property. We have a covering letter from the agent and an eight signature petition in support from owners occupants on Sunnyside.
Through you, Mr. Chair. We have the agent online and no registered speakers.
Okay, thank you.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the committee. This is Bombad Ben Baghdadi from BBA Design Studio Inc. I'm the architect and applicant before you today. The address for the record is thirteen Hollyberry Trail in North York.
Great, thank you very much, sir. Panel, another one, I think it's fairly straightforward, just FSI. Anyone need a presentation?
Just a note, oh, no, but not to the agent.
Okay. Sir, we don't need a presentation today. It's a fairly straightforward application. We've read your material, we're familiar with it. Is there anything you'd like to share with the panel before we take it into committee for a decision?
No, Mr. Chair. I think it's a fairly straightforward application. We're just adding to the back, and we have the support signature of our adjacent neighbours that will be affected, so we are good to continue. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Nellie, did you have a question?
It's a note, the purpose, we need to fix the purpose of the application.
Yeah, there's a double sentence in the, in the purpose, and we'll just edit that out.
And I can bring the motion.
Okay. All right. You wanna move a motion, go right ahead.
Right, so, straight, very straightforward, you know, area that I know very well, so I would bring a motion to approve it, and no conditions.
All right. Motion by Mr. Vol, Ms. Volport to approve, all, I have a second, or? Mr. Gosh, all in favor? You have your approval. Thank you. Move on to item number eleven thirty, Watson Avenue. This is an application to alter the existing two-story detached dwelling by constructing a side two-story addition with a basement and a front staircase. The existing one-story side enclosed porch will be demolished. Committee has before to copy of plan of survey, site plan, floor plans and elevations, three photographs of trees on the subject property, eight form letters in support from owners occupants of properties on Saint John Road and Watson Avenue.
Through you, Mr. Chair. We have the agent here in person and no registered speakers.
Good morning, ma'am.
Good afternoon.
Oh, it is good afternoon, thank you.
I had good morning on my words, but it's good afternoon, Mr. Chair and panel. My name is Sandy Smith, and I'm at ten Overdale Road, Toronto, Ontario, and I am the agent.
All right, ma'am. Thank you for coming down. I'm just gonna ask whether we need a presentation, because this is fairly straightforward. Anyone need anything? No, we don't need a presentation today.
I'm, I'm good with that. It's a small, modest addition to the north of the house. It act, improves the house circulation immensely. We have eight letters of support, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
That's great, thank you. Any, panel, any questions to the speaker? Did such a great job, we have no questions.
Perfect.
Okay. Thank you. Now, let's take this into committee. Phil?
This is an area I'm familiar with. It's a very small house, adjacent to a lovely school. I, I agree with you that it improves the circulation. I think the variance is quite minor, doesn't impact the neighbours. We'd be hearing from them. If so, I would move to approve it, and there are no conditions.
All right. Motion by Mr. Gosh to approve, seconded by Mr. Bissonnet, all in favor. You have your approval. Thank you for coming down.
Thank you very much.
All right, we move on to item number twelve, two twenty-nine Sororan Avenue. This is an application to alter the existing two-and-a-half story semi-detached dwelling by constructing a complete third story addition, front porch with stairs, a front basement walkout and a rear third floor terrace. There'll be a secondary suite in the basement. Committee has before to copy of plan of survey, site plan, floor plans and elevations, two photographs of the subject property. We have a, Metrolinks advisory report, we have correspondence and concern from the Duffer and Grove Housing Cooperative next door.
Through you, Mr. Chair. We have the agent online and no registered speakers.
All right. Good afternoon.
Morning, committee. Oh, yes, same mistake. Good afternoon.
Name and address, please, sir.
Gareth Byrne, two-two-nine Sororan Avenue, Toronto.
Okay, sir, we don't need a full presentation, but perhaps a bit of an overview of what we're proposing, and you'll notice, I think, I'm sure you've seen the letter from the, from the co-op beside you?
Yes.
Maybe you could speak to that.
So specifically to that point, we, I met with the, the neighbours to the north, which is the cooperative. They, since that letter provided a letter of support, so there's now a letter of support attached to our application from them. Their initial concerns about bringing the property forward, they now understand what it is that we're proposing, and they said they were happy with that. The, the front of the property is gonna be brought forward to align with the, with the property directly to the south, and actually, the, the property that belongs to the housing corp is, is much further forward again. So I think the expectation was that we were bringing it out to align with them, but that's not the case.
Panel, any questions? Sir, the, the.
That's, that's, that's the letter, yeah. That's the letter there.
The rear third story platform, is there, it looks like it's fairly compact in there. Is there an issue with overlook or privacy from that terrace?
I, I don't, I don't think so. The, if we move to the third floor, the next one down, yeah, you can see that the, maybe going one too far there. So the, the, the property to the south, which is at the bottom of the page, their, their, their building extends pretty much to where that is anyway, so we would be overlooking onto their roof. And then the property to the north is longer than our building, which is the cooperative building. And then we would be, again, looking onto their roof. If, I, I think our intention would be to put some screens. I think our intention would be to put some screens on the side, they're not detailed in the drawing, but that's what we'd probably do, so that the view would be directly backwards towards the park.
Right. And it forges the users a little bit of privacy as well.
Yeah, I mean, it'll be me that's living there, so yeah, yeah, so I'd be happy to put some screens up, probably not the full length, but definitely half of it.
All right. So if the panel were inclined, you'd be okay with a condition to put privacy screening on both sides?
Fifty percent of the length, yes, I would prefer not to do the entire length, just because of the way the sun moves around and that would prevent the sun really landing on the terrace.
Okay. All right, panel, any questions? None, okay. There's no speaker, they've satisfied the co-op next door, so let's take this into committee. Who wants to take this one? How about the new kid?
Sure. I'll put in a motion to approve with the condition that we just discussed being privacy screens for fifty percent of the length on the north and south.
Great, okay. Motion by Ms. Pleaser to approve with that condition for privacy screening, I have a second, or Mr. Bissonnet, all in favor? It's approved. It's great to get him the first one under your belt, huh? All right, we move on to item number...
Through you, Mr. Chair, item thirteen and fourteen.
Thirteen and fourteen together?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, we will do item thirteen and fourteen together. I'll read them both into the record. Thirteen is 373 Manning Avenue. This is an application to construct a new three-story semi-detached dwelling, which is a fourplex with a covered front porch and stairs, a front basement walkout and a rear deck and stairs. This dwelling is currently under construction, there'll be five residential dwelling units on this lot, four in the main dwelling and one occupying the ancillary building. Committee has before it copy of plan and survey, site plan, floor plans and elevations, one photograph of the subject property, covering letter from the agent and a previous decision number affecting the subject property. While I'm at it, I'll just read into the record item number fourteen, 375 Manning. This is an application similarly to construct a new three-story semi-detached dwelling, a fourplex with a covered front porch with stairs, front basement walkout and a rear deck with stairs. This dwelling is currently under construction, there'll be five residential dwelling units on this lot, four in the main dwelling and one in the ancillary building. Committee has before it copy of plan and survey, site plan, floor plans and elevations, one photograph of the subject property, covering letter from the agent and a previous decision number affecting the subject property, and we have the agent with us.
Through you, Mr. Chair, we have the agent online and no registered speakers.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, it's Mr. Bronskill again, although I am virtually in front of you and not in person in front of you.
All right, sir.
Z3 Bay Street, 33400, Toronto, Ontario, sorry.
No worries, okay, so you're okay with us combining these, sir?
I am, they're very similar, and in fact, I was trying to remember through you, Mr. Chair, which members of the panel may have addressed very similar variances that we did directly to the north on Manning. I don't remember whether there was anyone on this panel, but we had very similar variances for... There's a, technically would be a vacant lot to the north, and then 377 and 379, and a really interesting brick building that also backs onto the Allen Reynolds Lane that was being converted. And it's very similar variances to ones approved, gosh, about a month ago by the Committee of Adjustment for those properties on Manning.
Okay. So, that's fine. The previous approval on these properties...
Yes.
Can we just speak to what's different and what's changed? I did notice that the height is a little higher than what you originally had approval for.
Yeah, what we've worked through with these, there's no variance for the number of units on the property, obviously, it's still a fourplex and, for both of them, a fourplex, and then the laneway, so five units in the... Because of the one unit in the ancillary building at the back. What's been worked through with these, and in part informed by the process for the Manning units that we've had approved to the north, it's frankly livability for the rental units. So, a few things that are in this, there's a front stair in both of them in the very limited front yard that allows the entrance down to the basement rental unit, and that's a two-bedroom unit in the basement, and so there's that exterior stair. There's slightly more FSI, slight increase in the FSI. The units are a little bit more livable. What we're doing on the second and third floors is there's a cantilever that you're able to see in the front and rear elevations. The intent of that is it gets a little wider bedrooms, ten feet instead of nine feet, on the second and third floors, but still allows the setback at grade, so you can have access to the rear, you can get, you know, bins that are in the back out to the front, and so the elevations are really good at showing that, we've still got that good walkway along the side of the unit into the back, but slightly more livable units on the second and third floor. That foot in the bedrooms makes a bit of a difference, it really does, but you can see at grade, you're still going to be able to get down into the back in a comfortable manner rather than bringing the entire building out to the side yard. The other... The other, I don't know if it's a big change, in addition to height, which just gives a little bit more in terms of floor to ceiling, but also gets rid of some slope ceiling aspects, so better livability for the third floor, is you'll see a variance for the front third-story balcony. There's a variance to pick up that balcony on the front third story, which obviously you can see on the third floor plan. That balcony then is just a bit bigger, so it's a little bit more livability in terms of having an outdoor space for that unit. And same thing, you'll see... Oh no, I've picked up the variance already for the front porch stairs, sorry, Mr. Chair. So the side yard variance applies only to the second and third floors, we've still got .9 at grade. Last thing I'll say, Mr. Chair, just in terms of the main wall heights, it is a bit of an interesting technical variance in that the variance has you at 8.5 if you have what would essentially be a step back of 1.4 meters from the wall below. If staff could maybe pull up, sorry to do this to you, the side elevation. So, the main wall height variance wouldn't be required, the overall height would still be required from 11 to 11.7 if we had an additional step back at the rear of 1.4 meters. So we have it, if you see there on the left on the front, we've got the setback is the way it's in the bylaw, but I refer to it as a step back from the floor below. If we'd done that at the back as well, we wouldn't need the main wall height variance, but because we're zero, we don't have a setback at the back there, we need the main wall height variance as well from 8.5 to what's technically 11.05 in the bylaw. We're seeking it frankly, as I indicated earlier, it just gives a bit more space in that third floor unit, bit more livability, bit more light, and better two bedrooms there at the rear, Mr. Chair. So, that's sort of a summary of the changes and some of the rationale and of the thinking.
Thank you. I think I do recall the Manning property, just to, I think it's the north.
Yeah, it's got that interesting old brick coach house building at the back, and I couldn't remember whether it was used for textiles or whether it was... Had been used way back when even for chickens, and I just couldn't remember what that building was used for at the back.
So, you are putting fourplexes there as well, so...
Correct.
Is the height that was approved for those, for that application, the same?
Yes.
Because I do notice that you've got ten-foot ceilings on the second and third floor.
We do, there's two aspects of that. One, there is a livability component, but we're also putting in both fire separation and sound isolation, which picks up a little bit of the floor height that's there, and again, that goes to livability, so that picks up a little bit of the height increase as well.
Okay. All right, panel, any other, any questions? Anyone have any questions? Yes, Nellie?
So, regards to, it's like, what, it's variance number one, I understand that to the north you will be, you know, the similar building, right?
Yes.
Of the, you know, of the 373, but to the south, right, there is a smaller building to the south and the third floor will have a significant overlook, especially for, you know, the... And we have a variance for, you know, what's .65 meters, right? It's not the .9, so do you have any suggestions how to address that?
So that balcony, I'm just pulling up the floor plan, it's technically on the front. I wouldn't be opposed if the... If the committee wanted to have any type of privacy screening to the south on that, on the balcony. I'm just making sure which plan... Sorry, Mr. Chair, I have two sets of plans open and just looking. That plan, I think, apologies to staff. Which number plan is that, sorry, staff? AD 101. Yep, thank you, that's great. Yeah, it's... So it's... There is that balcony and there's, and you can see at the front, I'm just confused at what plan that is, it's on the screen, because it's technically a different set of plans than the one I have open in front of me. Mr. Chair, can you just give me a moment? I'm just... Are staff able... The plans that are on the screen, can I beg staff's indulgence just to look at the first page and the date on those plans? Because I was looking at a different ID 103 that I had downloaded.
You see it, September the 3rd?
Yeah, September the 3rd. First floor plan? Second floor plan? My ID 103 for 373 Manning was different than what was up on the screen, though. There, that's it, sorry, now we're on the same place, thank you. That's the third floor plan, so now I'm a little less confused, sorry, Mr. Chair. So, and apologies through you for the question, that makes a little more sense to me. So, you can see the terrace is there on the left on the third floor plan, so you're correct, there's a semi-detached structure that would be to the north at 375. To the south, you're right, we are bringing it closer, and so there is a, you know, a lower scale dwelling. It is at the front where I would suggest there's a lower expectation of privacy, given that's on the street side there. It's not like it's a third floor balcony on the rear, but at the end of the day, if there was some desire on that side of that third floor terrace to have some form of screening on it, we wouldn't be opposed to some type of condition. It is the front, I don't think it's as necessary, but also in the end, I'm not opposed if that's something that's causing the committee some concern.
Okay, thank you. Panel, anyone else? Okay, let's go in, committee. Phil?
Sure. I have no issue with these changes, I think they improve the units that are getting built. In any event, I am all for these types of accommodation being as livable a unit as possible. It's an alternative to all the condos. And so for those reasons, I would move to approve it. I am not going to suggest a condition for the privacy screening, I think it makes sense at the front of the property not to require that. So, yeah, I'll move to approve. Do we require separate motions, Secretary Trecher, for each item?
Through you, Mr. Chair, we can just say for both items thirteen and fourteen?
Sure, so for both items thirteen and fourteen, and I see no conditions, so I would move to approve both items.
Okay, motion to approve, I have a second, or Mr. Bissonnet, all in favor? It's unanimous, you have your approval. Just as inside, I would agree with you on the front facade, I think screening balconies actually adds to the perceived massing of it, which I don't think is desirable in the front.
And removes that eyes-on-the-street aspect that actually can be beneficial at a front of a property.
Yeah, that's true, that's true.
Sorry, through you, Mr. Chair, the items are closed now?
Yeah, no, we'll have a, maybe we'll have a side conversation afterwards, okay? All right. We move on to item number fifteen. 996 to 998 Avenue Road, this is an application to construct a new six-story detached residential building with a ground floor, front entrance canopy, a rear ground floor terrace, rear balconies on the sixth, second to sixth levels, excuse me, a front rooftop terrace and a rear rooftop access for the mechanical equipment located above the sixth level. There'll be a total of six residential dwelling units on this lot, six-plex, there will also be six residential parking spaces on the P1 garage level with access provided by vehicular elevator, as well as one visitor parking space provided in the rear yard. Committee has before it a copy of plan and survey, site plan, floor plans and elevations, five photographs of the subject property, a covering letter from the agent, presentation materials from the agent, a rental housing demolition and conversion declaration of abuse and screening form, we have staff reports from urban forestry and from community planning, email correspondence from transportation review, three form letters in support from owner's occupants of 869, 871, 873, 875, and 987 Avenue Road and 979 Avenue Road. It feels like more than three letters, threat letters. We have interest in, from correspondence from 123 and 125 Braemar Avenue, and correspondence in opposition from 1000, I guess it looks like apartment one, apartment two, Avenue Road.
Through you, Mr. Chair, we have the agent online and two registered speakers here in person.
All righty then. Okay. Mr. Goldberg?
Mr. Chair, I take it you can hear me okay?
Just a little louder, if you might.
I can try to do that. How is that?
That's better, thank you. Name and address, please, sir.
My name is Michael Goldberg, I am a principal at Goldberg Group who are the planning consultants for this application, 2098 Avenue Road, M5M4A8.
All right, sir, we have some folks who want to speak to this item, so we'll need a presentation, please.
No problem, sir. If I can have the presentation material pulled up, I'll start in the meantime. This is a site of an existing multiplex on Avenue Road, fronting onto Avenue Road, you can see the proposal on the screen there. It is next to, to the south, a four-story apartment building, and I believe also a multiplex to the immediate north, I think it's a semi to the north. Avenue Road is a major street, we're about 100 meters south of the intersection of Avenue Road and Eglington, and as you can see on the screen there, there is a LRT station when the Eglington crosstown opens, we'll have immediate access to that. You've seen the consultation that we've done with the community planning, they have no objection, and we have no objection to their two conditions relating to the tenant assistance package, there is no objection from the local councillor, we do have letters of support from transportation services, and we have no objection to the comments that have been made so far. In relation to this application, over the last two years, there's been some complicated planning going on at city council for the purpose of creating or permitting, as of right, modest intensification within neighborhoods. One is the expanded housing options in neighborhoods on major streets, we are on a major street, and one is the multiplex bylaw, and it's created some degree of complexity, one because of appeals, and two because of change definitions and so on. Both, I can advise the committee... Both, I can, I can advise, uh, the committee that both the Ehan bylaw, the major streets bylaw, uh, is now in force and effect as of September the 11th, 2025, and I can say that the multiplex bylaw, uh, is also in effect because there were no appeals to that bylaw. Now, the variances that are before you, um, um, define this as a six-plex, not as an apartment building. Um, the reason it's called a six-plex is because the multiplex bylaw changed the definition, um, of an apartment building from, uh, five units or more to seven units or more. Um, and therefore, if you could just stop there, um, the person who's scrolling, that'd be great, thank you. Um, and so, we are not considered an apartment building because we have six, we have six units, not seven. You can see the unit sizes are very large, so in effect, if you would just carve one of those, uh, units in half, we'd have seven units in there. And if you look at the front rendering, if you can go to the next slide, please, uh, and there was a rendering, by all measure, this looks, feels, functions, and looks like an apartment building. It's just that it has six units as opposed to seven. So, the import of this, uh, being called a six-plex is the variances that are before you relate to a six-plex, not an apartment building. Um, if the, um, Ehan bylaw for, um, an apartment building would be applied, we would be permitted six stories. We would be permitted a building depth, and if you can go back to the la, the slide just before this, please, we would be permitted a building depth of twenty-five meters. And what I can advise is our building isn't, is in fact twenty-four point nine meters, but the basement garage extends beyond, so the basement garage, which is entirely underground, um, extends, um, extends the building depth measured. But the actual, um, building, this apartment building is twenty-four point nine meters, which complies with the Ehan bylaw, which permits twenty-five meters. Um, there would be no main building wall height variances if we're considered an apartment building. Um, and so, I'll go to the, um, some of the, uh, variances that do remain. Uh, so you've got a variance for the balcony, variance number one, uh, it's on the south side. You could see there is a seven point five, on that side of the building, there is a seven point five meter setback to the, to the building, you could see there's a jog in the building. The north part is six meters and that is a variance before you. The south part is seven point five, but there's a three-meter variance, which means that the ver, that the, the encroachment, um, is a bit bigger because they wanted some outdoor living area, more comfortable living area for the area. Oh, we're running out of time, goodness me. May I ask for about two more minutes, please?
Sure, just, uh, if you could do it quickly.
Thank you, I will try. So, in any event, we're happy to put a south screen on the balcony, uh, because we have a one-point-one meter south setback. In terms of the, uh, front canopy, uh, variance, that, that's facing Avenue Road, next to apartment buildings, it's a one-point-eight meter projection to provide some weather protection, it's really very minor. In terms of the rear setback, you could see that, um, the northern, let's say roughly half of the building is six meters from the rear lot line. You, what you'd need to know is, you could see on this plan, immediately budding us to the west are, uh, rear garages of the homes up front on the Braemar and parking. Those rear yards are not used for amenity spaces, immediately behind us, they're used for parking area, they're all paved and you can see that on street view if you want to do that. And again, uh, on the south setback of one-point-one meters, where one-point-eight meters is required, you could see the four-story apartment building to the south of us. Um, what would be required between buildings, uh, is three-point-six meters, and we have in this circumstance four-point-one-four meters. Um, so, um, I think that some of the comments that you've received is a, are a bit confused about what is intended by council, but this is precisely what is intended by council by creating the major streets bylaw, um, allowing six stories as of right onto major streets. You're in an area that, uh, we're providing basically one parking space per unit plus a visitor parking space in the back. We are not affecting the, um, easement area at all of the, that is, it's a shared easement for access, that will continue to be shared, that's the setback, respects that. And I think that should be it, and I'll answer any further questions, committee members may have.
Great, thank you, sir. Any burning questions before we hear from speakers? None? All right. Uh, who's here to speak on this item? Yeah, come on up, ma'am.
Good afternoon.
Your name and address, please.
My name is Karen Fingrit, and I am the owner and of the building that is directly north of this property at 1000 and 1002 Avenue Road. It's one building, it's not an apartment O2, okay?
Okay, sorry, yeah.
Um, which is, which has five rental apartments. The requested variance will directly impede and affect my rental property. I was told by the developer, Mr. Yuval, that the proposed building would be a six-story luxury rental. I've noticed, um, this is an aside, I've noticed that there are still renters in the present property and that he has not applied for a demolition permit. The properties between the two buildings are very close together with no setback. As this existing building was erected in the fifties, I'm also concerned about the demolition and removal of possible hazardous waste such as asbestos, which we don't know. The variance is not minor, as the footprint coverage of this building is not a small addition. You have all the maximum heights, maximum lengths and, uh, uh, the, uh, minimum required setback, uh, you have all of that information, but it's a, it's an, it's an enormous change. As you can see in my survey, there are two properties sharing a mutual driveway right-of-way which extends from the entrance east of Avenue Road and continues west to the back of the properties. This provides vehicular access for my tenants with six parking spots to enable trades to service the building and to be able to have the right to access the main roadway which is on the, on Avenue Road. It must accommodate emergency services should there be need. The shared sidewalk on the mutual, um, driveway, uh, the shared sidewalk on the mutual driveway on Avenue Road must be kept free of snow and ice in the winter. Uh, there are doorways on the south side of my building beside the mutual driveway from which my tenants enter their suites. As you can see in my photos, there are three levels of windows facing south which would be blocked from daylight and the view would become a six-story wall. In the plans, the underground parking would encroach below ground to the edge of the north of the existing property line on their side of the mutual driveway. As this would need to be dug, um, my question is what assurances are in place to protect my property's foundation and my building? In order to pour concrete, to erect this underground parking lot, the new owner, Mr. Yuval, has spoken to me and suggested that my tenants not have access to our mutual driveway so that he may park his concrete trucks for some period of time. He mentioned that he would pay my tenants to deny access of their parking space and suggested that he would park their vehicles, uh, elsewhere. I believe that the plans are to dig the entire, um, mutual driveway up. Um, and, uh, as the, as the owner of the property, I do not agree to disrupt nor display, displace anyone as they pay their rent, uh, pay rent for parking space, and I do not want to inconvenience these long-term tenants. The mutual right-of-way cannot be blocked nor dug up. The size and closeness to the, my north building would completely block, block out all of daylight for most of the day due to the enormous size of this proposed six-story building, taking up most of the land footprint. I have enclosed photos which were taken in the later afternoon and show my entire south-facing windows as well as western-facing windows which we, which would be without daylight and sunlight. Um, as an aside, there's a patio where my tenants barbecue and enjoy growing plants and get the sun all day. The view from the south-facing windows would be of a darkened, whoop, would be of a darkened, shadowy, solid six-story wall which would come right up to the border of the mutual driveway, and there is no plan for a setback. As the plan calls for, um, this building beside 1000, 1002 Avenue Road driveway, there is now existing at the moment, um, a back area where they have parked cars. So, my parked vehicles, parking face, parking facing north and west would not be able to turn around in order to drive out to Avenue Road. I see that the plan calls for only a parking space enough for one car. The previous owners to my south and I have always shared the expense of the shoveling and mutual driveway of snow with a contractor. Even if I decide that I can pay the contractor to shovel the entire road, in fact, I only own my part of the driveway, and so, this must be resolved so that my tenants are unencumbered. The easement must be maintained, this would include the repairs and maintenance of the mutual drive pavement and, um, at a shared cost. The new entrance on Avenue Road would have to, um, would have to include a now non-existing ramp entrance to the lower parking garage where a sidewalk presently exists. I have discussed in my document to the committee of adjustment my other concerns. This application is not a minor variance as the bylaw exists today. Thank you.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Any questions, the speaker? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right, we have someone else here? Good afternoon, sir?
Uh, good afternoon, thank you very much. Uh, my name is Jeff Steiner. Uh, I have an interest in a property right across the street, number 995 Avenue Road, so it's not a budding, but it's directly across the street on Avenue Road. I just firstly want to thank the members of the committee of adjustment for your public service, cause I know how much time and effort goes into preparing for these meetings, uh, much less, uh, uh, going through the entire day to hear all of these matters. And also, of course, welcome to, to the new member, and I hope she knows what she's in for, uh, on this, so thank you also for your public service. Um, I want to comment on some views about what I would say is the, uh, comment on the appropriateness or not of this specific development. But I'd like to maybe first preface that, Chair, with, you know, some observations about the, you know, the current environment in which this proposal, uh, should be considered. We all know that, uh, you can hardly, uh, read any newspaper or news and see that there's huge, uh, concerns about the availability of housing, uh, in this city and many other cities, including affordable housing. This is a major initiative that the city government, the provincial government, that claims it's going to build hundreds of thousands of homes over the next couple of years, and even the federal government has appointed a housing czar, uh, because this issue of having adequate and this, and sufficient housing is such a high priority. And I raise that, uh, context because the city also has proposals to put secondary homes and apartments, uh, in established neighborhoods, that's getting some pushback, uh, in some of those communities of, uh, which don't have necessarily the transit, aren't on arterial roads. Um, and that controversial policy, I believe, passed city council. And I'd contrast that with the opportunity to build more housing on major arterial roads. And the governments of Canada, Ontario, and the city have put billions of dollars into the LRT, which is in fact an underground, uh, LRT. And so, my comment on the appropriateness of this is maybe, perhaps, the heightened density isn't appropriate for the long term in the area. Obviously, the area is going to transform as all transit hubs generally do. The impact on neighbors, uh, we heard from the previous speaker some very practical issues that any developer has to consider, but I'm concerned that the policies, uh, in place for the transformation of an area after an enormous investment is made, after there's incredible requirement for more housing, uh, aren't necessarily meeting that. And having to come to the committee of adjustment to simply, uh, go from four stories to six stories, um, uh, you know, that, I think, is, uh, missing the bigger picture of the transformation that is probably required in the area. I can't recommend to you without, you know, the owner's, uh, permission that maybe a six-story building could have a two-story, um, a setback, you know, a plus-two for this kind of area. It's a hundred, less than a hundred meters from a major transit hub on two arterial roads. Earlier today, I was here in the morning listening to Avenue Road in Davenport. Eight hundred meters from a subway, on no more significant road than this, it's on Avenue Road. Eglington is much more significant than Davenport, yet a thirty-five story building is going up on such a place, eight hundred meters from travel. Here, we're a hundred meters on, on, uh, on two major highways. So, I can't, uh, obviously change the proposal that, uh, you know, a plus-two setback would be added if they're going to the trouble of doing this redevelopment. I certainly, as a neighbor, want to make sure that the tenants and the owners in the area are properly, uh, dealt with and accommodated during a period of, of transformation, but this transformation must occur. This, uh, interruption of people's lives for a period of time of construction is essential, uh, because otherwise, we're going to be here ten, fifteen years from now still complaining about the affordability of housing and the availability of housing. If we're not going to build it on major arterials, if we're not going to build it after putting billions of dollars into a subway line in a location like this, uh, then where are we going to, to add density? So, what I would encourage, if this is possible, and I only had a couple of days to look at this because of the postal strike, I only got this material on Saturday, um, you know, is there, when you do make your judgment, an opportunity to, for the committee to note that in no way is there some precedent set that this height, this density, uh, is by, in some means, a precedent and no other proposal, uh, could come forward that would have higher height and higher density? I think the area needs to combine some of these properties, uh, I think on one of your other projects, uh, you heard that, oh, we have these three buildings that are going together and each one has a driveway and all the difficulty, when really, those properties maybe should have been put together and a better, uh, public realm and better, uh, egress and access is available. Doing these are one-off, I cannot oppose this landowner going, proposing the six-story. I just think, to summarize, I find it a little bit modest. I wish the neighbors got together. We're going to have to live with disruption and owners of property are going to have to accommodate tenants and their neighbors as best as possible, as long as it doesn't stymie the intensification around major, uh, transit hubs and on major arterials. So, that's, uh, Chair and committee members, all I wanted to come today, so I'm in favor of the proposal, haven't had too much time to study it, uh, but I consider it to be relatively modest.
Sir, thank you for, uh, a very well-thought-out and articulate presentation. I'm, I can tell you that I suspect there are many members of the committee of adjustment which would agree with you in terms of, um, the, uh, need for additional density in and around transit stations in particular, so we appreciate your comments.
Thank you very much.
All right, is that it for speakers? All right, we can get, uh, Mr. Goldberg back?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't have a lot to say. We can't do anything on the easement that is not lawful. Um, we are keeping the easement open, um, for the driveway purposes, you can see that on the site plan. Um, the easement is going to be used for driveway purposes as it is today. We have a visitor parking space in the back that is, um, uh, going to be utilized, um, and in any event, it's a civil matter, it's not a committee of adjustment matter, but it's a civil matter. We can't touch that anymore, not building, uh, the house above grade on it, um, and, uh, and, and the setback is at one-point-eight meters, which coincidentally, uh, complies with the bylaw as well. In terms of snow and ice, that's, you know, um, clearing of snow and ice, I, I suspect there'll be six new owners on this property using that, um, driveway because there is a visitor parking space, and certainly, they, I think it's in their interest and the neighborly thing to do to ensure that there's shared costs and ensuring that that, uh, driveway is clear of snow, uh, and ice as well. Um, so, other than that, um, this is in, uh, now in an approved, protected major transit station area, as the gentleman had, um, Mr. Steiner had just mentioned, we are a hundred meters, uh, from the, um, uh, from the transit station to the north. And, and the, this is a, a, a little boutique building, there is one unit per floor, these are large units. So, it's catering to people, um, who are probably and possibly living in the neighborhood already and want housing options, which, um, the provincial policy statement and the city of Toronto official plan speak to. Um, and, uh, it leaves housing options for those who want to, you know, uh, downsize from their single detached house and possibly in the neighborhood. They, they love the neighborhood so that they, um, don't have to leave the neighborhood, they could still, um, occupy in this boutique little building. Uh, and it's designed by Mr. Wingle, and I, I think committee is very familiar with him in designing very attractive buildings. So, I'll leave it with, at that, and again, I'll, I'll make the offer to any committee member, should you wish to ask any question, I'd be happy to answer if I can.
Great, thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. I just noticed on your drawings, this is obviously a six-story condominium. So you're going to have to comply with the Condom Minimac. There will have to be a condo board?
Yes.
Yeah. So there'll be six residents. I guess everyone will be on the board.
I'm not sure about the structure of that, but yes, it's six units, and it'll be condominiumized.
Okay. And I don't know if anyone has any questions, but I did want to address the previous speaker's point about precedent setting. I would just, for the record, note that the Committee of Adjustment does not set precedent, either for too big or too small. We deal with every application on a case-by-case basis, and it's done in the context of that surrounding neighborhood and the impacts of that application. So there is no precedent that comes out of Committee of Adjustment decisions. I just wanted, for the record, make that point. All right. No, ma'am, your time is done. I'm sorry.
I just have one question.
No, you're not allowed to question. Your time is done. I'm sorry.
It's about condos.
Okay.
Is it a condo or is it a...
I think I asked that question, and he said, yes, it's a condominium, and it will have to comply with the condominium act. Yep.
I have a question about the accessible parking, and it's a variance number eleven.
Yes.
So was it the best design you possibly could do?
Yeah.
Is there a possibility to comply with, you know, accessible parking requirements?
Because of the columns that exist for structural reasons, the answer is yes, we would be able to comply, but we would lose one parking space because of the locations of columns. So I think in context, that provision of the bylaw relates to any parking garage or any parking structure where there's accessible parking. And because this is such a teeny little or very small little parking, yeah, you should leave it on there, parking garage to begin with, this accessible parking spaces is very conceivably as close to the elevator as it would be in a much larger building. It just happens to be the furthest away in this building for practical reasons of the structural elements and being able to get six parking spaces down there, but it's still very close to that elevator.
Any other questions? See none? Let's take this into committee. Phil?
I know the explanation was there in the materials, but I really appreciated getting the explanation from the agent as to why there were so many variances when we know on major streets the permissions are different and should permit, as of right, a six-story structure. The explanation is this is six units, not seven. It would almost fall into what I would call a loophole. You know, it would be if the zoning examiner were permitted to, as a variance, say, oh, let's look at this as an apartment building with a variance to have one fewer unit, which I don't think is how they can look at it. But if they were able to look at it that way, we would have very few variances.
Right.
So we would have the variance for the depth because the underground garage is a little larger than the ground floor of the building, which wouldn't have a depth issue. We would have, it sounds like potentially the balcony variances, but most of the variances that look really quite large, when you look at this, would, in terms of height and everything that goes with it, wouldn't be here. So in that context, in the context of what Ehan is doing, you know, saying, are we going to let them have six units when the same envelope would essentially be as of right with seven, I view this application as minor in that context.
Yep, I would agree. Anyone else? Why don't you try a motion then, Phil?
Okay, sure. So for that reasoning, I believe it meets the four tests, and I would move to approve this application subject to the planning conditions with respect to the tenancy requirements, tenancy relocation plan, as well as forestry condition number three, and transportation condition.
All right. Motion by Mr. Gosh to approve with those conditions. Do I have a second, or Mr. Bissinette, all in favor? You have your approval, sir. Thank you very much. Okay, let's move on to item sixteen has been deferred.
Closed.
Closed, pardon me.
Items sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen.
Sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen have been closed. Is nineteen...
Chair, do you have a moment?
Oh, sure.
Through you, Mr. Chair, yes. We just have items nineteen and twenty for the morning session. We'll take a five-minute break. Please turn off your videos, microphones, mute the room.
Okay, we're back in hearing those that want to have discussions outside of the hearing room. Thank you.
Okay. We continue on with, uh, hang on a second. Where's my cursor? I know. Just finding my cursor. There it is. We found item number nineteen two fifty-nine Geary Avenue. This is an application to construct a new eight-story, eight-story building, a self-storage unit with secondary uses at grade on the western portion of the lot and to permit recreational use on the lot as well as self-storage warehouse, retail store, medical clinic, and eating establishment uses at grade within the building. The existing two-story commercial building on the eastern portion of the lot will be partially retained with a portion of the building on the west side being demolished to facilitate the construction of a new driveway and parking lot between the two buildings. There'll be a total of thirty-two parking spaces, including five accessible parking spaces, a total of six type-B loading spaces provided in the lot. Also, a privately owned public accessible space will be added on a west lot line and a site-specific zoning bylaw application is currently under review. Committee has before it copies, plan and survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations, revised diagram two from the agent, revised diagram three from the agent, seven photographs of the subject property, covering letter from the agent, Arbus report, a pedestrian wind comfort study, presentation materials from the agent, sun and shadow study, traffic impact study, and a site-specific zoning bylaw affecting the subject property. We have email correspondence from community planning and from engineering, or transportation services. We have staff report from, another staff report from community planning, and we have correspondence in opposition from Seven Brandon Avenue.
Through you, Mr. Chair. We have the agent online. We have two registered speakers.
Support or opposed?
In opposition. Community planning is requesting deferral.
Yes, I saw that, yeah.
So maybe the applicant wants to speak to that first?
Start off with that.
Yeah, okay.
All right.
We'll unmute the agent.
Mr. McKay.
Thank you, sir, Mr. Mackay. No worries, no worries. It happens all the time. David Mackay, registered professional planner with MHBC, seventy-fifty Western Road, Suite 230, Woodbridge, Ontario.
Thank you, Mr. Mackay. I think the first order of business is to get your reaction to planning's request to defer this application.
Yes, I think it's actually not to defer the entirety of the application. The concern that they've raised relates to the medical clinic use, and they've said they're generally, they were fine with it, but they want to put conditions on. They haven't spelled out what those conditions are. My perspective on it is that the use request is appropriate. We have as-of-right permissions on the site for offices, which is very similar to in operation and effect as a clinic. And I did try to reach out to planning staff. I did talk to them about it, the planner on our site plan file, and her thought process was that they wanted to limit the use. So I'm prepared, sir. If, I would like to proceed with the application. And if so inclined, if committee would like to put a condition on the size of the medical clinic, I'd be happy to recommend three hundred square meters, which is very similar to other restrictions that are in the bylaw for ancillary-type uses.
So, let's just probe that a little bit. Is anything in the planning report speak to the size of the medical building?
No, it doesn't, sir. No, it doesn't.
So you've got us at a bit of a disadvantage, I'd say, is that you're asking us to make a decision on size where we really don't have any basis to do that.
Yeah, and frankly, sir, my position is that there shouldn't be any restrictions on it. Office is permitted as of right. It's just the type of office we're talking about. It's a medical office versus a standalone general office. And there's no restrictions on a general office in the zoning. So I'm not sure what the concern is with staff, other than perhaps they don't want the medical clinic to utilize the entirety of the ground floor frontage, and that's what a restriction on size would do. And I'm quite happy, as I said, to volunteer that, to resolve this issue with, if committee feels a condition such a size would be appropriate.
What is the current size of the proposal in the current application?
So, right now, we have four units on the ground floor. They range in size from one hundred and thirty-eight point seven square meters to two hundred and nineteen point four square meters. So the three hundred square meter size would either fill up one of these spaces or one and a half of these spaces should there be a demand for this type of use going forward. And so that allows that, three hundred square meters allows a little bit of flexibility to meet tenant demand.
So your three hundred meters is larger than any of the existing four units currently proposed?
That's right, but these are as demise. So the interior demise malls can move fairly easily and accommodate additional space for that unit. That's why we've, we're, I'm mentioning about the three hundred square meters.
So you don't think that planning staff are concerned about the size of the medical clinic relative to what is currently proposed in any of the one units?
If that was the case, sir, they should have said something. They haven't. If the committee feels that it should be limited to the largest size that's shown on this plan, two hundred and nineteen point four square meters, then so be it. It's one unit that we're talking about, and it's for a medical clinic that is, the use is in need. And I think there was an article today in the Globe Mail about the need for clinics and MRI facilities and other diagnostic equipment.
Okay.
So I think it's appropriate for this area, and it's appropriate for the proposal.
Okay. So bottom line is you'd like to proceed today? So if that's the case, we do have some folks here who want to speak to it, so we'll need a presentation.
No problem. If I can have the time reset and perhaps staff can bring up my presentation. And I know I only have five minutes, so I'm going to focus fairly quickly. And perhaps if staff can start on the second slide. So this area was subject to an overall study called Gary Works, which looked at the changing nature of this employment area and which resulted in official plan amendment five thirty-one and a bylaw. The official plan amendment called for improvements along the Gary Avenue to create a safe, animated, and inviting street with pedestrian activity. So the variances as an overall thought process would allow for that along, in terms of the uses, along the street frontage and would allow for the self-storage building to proceed as part of that proposal. Next slide. This area, as I said, as was described by the chair, it's on the eastern portion, generally the area in pink for the rec parking lot, and it's an infill development. We can skip over the variances. I'm going to cover those later. So perhaps go to the heightened density. So one of the items, we are seeking an increase from four stories and eighteen meters to eight stories and thirty point one-three meters and a slight increase in floor space index. I'd like to note that the policy regime talks about this specifically occurring. The policies say that four stories or eighteen meters is what should be, should occur, and that was put into the bylaw, but it can go over that through a process where shadow impacts and rail safety measures can be applied. The rail safety measures don't really apply to this because it's, at the rear of the site, it's self-storage, so it's not a high occupancy use. In terms of the shadow studies component, if we go to the next slide, we have addressed this through the stepping of the building. And this is exactly on point of what staff were talking about. We stepped the building, and we're, you know, the north, the south is on the left-hand side, the north and Gary is on the right-hand side, and that reduces the shadow impact. We go to the next slide, and we can look at these in further detail if you'd like, but there is a slight impact on the north side of Gary, and that's the red on this plan on the North Boulevard in the morning period from nine to ten. After that, from twelve eighteen or from before twelve eighteen, all the way through five eighteen, there is no shadow impact on the north side of Gary, and the policy calls for at least a minimum of five hours of sunlight on the north side of Gary to be installed. So in our respectful submissions, the policy test set out in the site-specific policy has been met to allow for this height increase to occur. In terms of density, there are numerous examples of increase in density. You've dealt with a number of them today. And specifically for self-storage, those have been occurred. If staff want to go to the next slide, I've listed a number of examples in recent times that have been approved by the committee throughout the city for density increases. So this is not uncommon. In terms of the proposed uses, the, as I'd mentioned, it's really to animate that ground floor plane and to allow for those to implement the study requirements. So the recreational component would be allowed, would provide some animation. We will also have retail and restaurant uses, which again are occurring along Gary Avenue, just not in this section yet. So it's really to promote those and to provide for that opportunity to animate the street as we've proposed. Next slide. And I've just itemized those there. As I said, in terms of the medical office use, these are small areas, small units. We're providing for, it's appropriate and provides a service to both Gary Avenue visitors as well as to the surrounding neighborhood. And if you look on the ground floor plan, you can see those four units that I've itemized. So it's not a big request that we're asking for in terms of these ancillary uses. Terms of parking and loading, I forgot to mention, sir. Variance number six, which is the accessible parking, we'd like to delete that. We clarified with staff that it's not required. I forgot to mention that at the beginning. But the parking and loading standards have been applied. They have been studied for self-storage facilities. It's a low parking requirement, and transportation staff are in support of the reductions as identified through the site plan control comments and their non-objection today. And lastly, in terms of parking, similar to other approvals that have been granted for self-storage, reductions in parking have occurred throughout the city because it is a low-demand component. And lastly, as I've noted, staff are in support for those items. There's that one clarification with regards to the medical clinic, but I think that can be resolved through that restriction if the committee so chooses. I'd be happy to answer questions that you may have.
Okay, thank you.
Right on the dot, five minutes, sir.
Very good, sir. Any questions, Bernie? You have chosen to go the variance route as opposed to amending the site-specific bylaw. Is there a reason for that? Is this just more expedient? Because there's a couple of big variances there.
Yes, so the actual site-specific bylaw applies to the entirety of Gary Avenue. This is the portion of the site that had this mapping for it. So it's really, it's not a site specific for the sites, for the area. That's the first thing. The second thing is, we did discuss this with city staff. We felt, they felt, as you can see by the comments, that the big variances, the height, was appropriately addressed. It does meet the four tests. And as you did today, sir, have approved similar variances for significant height increases on other projects. So we think that it's appropriate. We have gone through a year-long site plan process to get to this point, and this would just finish off the approval process to allow this exciting project to move forward.
Okay, thank you. All right, we have some folks who want to speak to this.
Ali, you've been unmuted.
Thank you so much. Hello, good afternoon, Mr. Chair and members of committee. My name is Haley Hamilton, and I am a co-owner at Seven Brandon Avenue, which is north of the proposed development at two fifty-nine Geary. I wanted to express my strong opposition to this variance request. First, this proposal is inconsistent with the city's own Gary Works planning framework. That report sets out a clear vision for modest employment supportive redevelopment that integrates with nearby homes. It recommends a maximum height of eighteen meters, about four stories, with step backs and transitions to protect residential areas. While the south side of Geary can allow potential exceptions to that height limit under certain conditions, those exceptions must be considered in the broader context of Gary Avenue west of Duffrin, where cumulative variances are rapidly changing the corridor's character. Allowing this proposal to exceed eighteen meters would further erode the intent of the plan and encourage similar oversized developments across this stretch of Geary. Second, this project would dedicate seven of eight floors to self-storage, a use that generates almost no employment per square foot. The Geary Works study specifically discourages low-employment intensity uses like storage or warehousing, and yet this area already has one of the highest concentrations of storage facilities in the city, including one less than four hundred meters away from this proposed site. This adds nothing to Geary's street life or its local economy. Third, we've seen the consequences of granting oversized variances. At three hundred Geary Avenue, a five-story office building was recently approved under similar circumstances, and today it sits only about fifty-three percent occupied. And that's a clear sign that the demand for additional large-format commercial or storage space here is limited. And finally, the cumulative effect of these decisions is changing the street. We're seeing a pattern of variance-driven development, particularly west of Duffrin, that's pushing Geary away from a human-scaled creative mixed-use character envisioned by the city's plan. If this continues, we'll end up with two versions of Geary. One, the Geary that Torontonians love, defined by small, creative businesses and adaptive reuse, and another, built through one-off variances dominated by large inactive buildings that erode the very character that made the street worth investing in to begin with. This proposal fails every major test of a minor variance. It doesn't maintain the intent of the official plan or zoning bylaw. It's not desirable for the area, and it's certainly not minor in its impact. For these reasons, I respectfully urge the committee to refuse this application. Thank you so much for your time. I really appreciate it. Go Jays, go.
Thank you very much. Panel, any questions to the speaker? Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else?
Elizabeth, you've been unmuted.
Hello?
Elizabeth, can you please try to speak? Elizabeth, please try to speak. I see you've muted and unmuted yourself.
Hello, Elizabeth, you've been unmuted. Should we bump her to a panelist? She is now. Okay, one more time, Elizabeth, you have been unmuted. One more time, Elizabeth, you've been unmuted.
Can we give her a call or not?
Through you, Mr. Chair. We don't have a phone number, so we're not unable to call her.
Okay, Elizabeth, we apologize, but we've tried several times, and we've been unable to connect with you. So, is she in opposition?
Yes.
Okay. What was her J. Webber address for? No? Okay. All right, we will go back to the agent. Mr. Mackay.
Thank you, sir. Yes, I did receive the comments from the resident Seven Brandon Avenue. Firstly, she's not correct. There is nothing in the Gary Works study that actually talks about restricting warehouse uses or self-storage. It talks about animating the ground floor plane, and that's what we're doing in this application. In fact, sir, cold storage and warehousing are permitted as of right today. It's a type of warehousing that is permitted that we're seeking. And as part of that work, we are animating the street in accordance with the Gary Avenue Works. With regards to the low-density component, this employment matter, we have to do a low-intensity proposal on this site, given the fact that we are right immediately adjacent to the rail line. We cannot have high occupancy uses within thirty meters of the railway, which is the rear south property line. And that's why those ancillary uses, the retail components, are forward along Gary Avenue. And our client is a self-storage operator. They wouldn't be building this building if they thought there wasn't a demand for self-storage in this area or in the city. And frankly, that's not a planning concern that the committee should be dealing with in any event. In terms of the discussion about the adjacent building to the north, that was a specific application that backs onto the houses at Brandon. This is, and it was for an office building. This is not an office building. So comparing an office building and occupancy rates to a self-storage facility with ground floor retail doesn't make any sense. It's nonsensical, and it's not appropriate. In terms of the precedent setting, this is a positive precedent setting, in my opinion. It will replace an existing surface parking lot with active ground floor retail and needed self-storage. There are numerous developments to the south on the former mall site that for condominium apartments and whatnot, that will need storage needs. There is a growing demand for storage. There will be and will continue to be. So I do not see this as negative. She mentions in her letter about residential impacts, about shadowing, natural, reduced natural light and privacy loss, and that simply is not the case, sir. We are significantly away from the Brandon Avenue residential. The shadow studies, as I've noted, provide for no shadows in the equinox timeframes or the summertime frames past Gary Avenue in the morning period, and there is certainly no indication of privacy loss from this proposal. And lastly, again, in terms of character, this is an employment area. It is, these are employment uses we're talking about and adding, and we're trying to animate the street, which is this proposal will undertake and will implement that Gary study. So with all due respect, sir, the four tests have been met, in my opinion, and in the opinion of planning staff with regards to the overall proposal. As I mentioned, there is a differential on the medical clinic, but that's it. They are in support of this application, and so am I, and I believe that it represents good planning and is in the public interest. I'd be happy to answer questions that committee may have.
Okay, thank you, sir. All right, panel, who's got, anyone have any questions? Phil?
So I know at the outset you were trying to address the planning staff issue with the medical uses. But we do have before us a planning report that I think, on the one hand, I would tend to agree with how it's characterized by you in terms of planning seems supportive of the overall application and that it can proceed as a minor variance. I think if they didn't believe it could be a minor variance, that would be in, you know, a report of that nature. That's been, you know, it's not like a one-line report. There's a bit to it. But they are saying they have a problem with the medical use. So what would be your position on, so in terms of medical use, so it looks to me like you're trying, your client is looking for different ways to animate the street front and trying to give themselves as much flexibility as possible. That seems to be what it is. Have they already approached any medical tenants? Like, is there a tenant lined up that's a medical use, or is this just to create flexibility?
As far as I'm aware, they do not have a tenant lined up. They have been approached for this type of medical use, and that's why they've requested the use. But they don't have a tenant signed up to date. It's a little bit too early because we're, you know, we've got an, you know, probably eighteen months of construction before that moves forward.
Okay. I was going to ask what your view is on us approving, but not approving that variance, but you've already made it clear that you want to proceed, so we'll, maybe that'd be a conversation for us in committee.
Yes. Through you, through you, Mr. Chair. I hate to use the analogy, but I don't want to throw the baby out with the bathwater. So if committee has concerns with that use request, despite my commentary, I would, you know, they're in the power to approve all the variances with the exception of that one variance. I would, you know, request that you not, but I'm in your hands.
Okay. Nellie?
So, you know, the main purpose of this, you know, project is the self-storage element, which is not a permitted use as well. So can you just elaborate why you're going for a self-storage warehouse? And again, if the purpose of the Gary Avenue study is to animate the street, you know, self-storage is not going to do that. All right? So can you just comment on that?
Yes. So first of all, the official plan does permit warehousing of all types on this property, and self-storage is located throughout the various employment areas as well as mixed-use areas. There is, it is an appropriate use to locate in this employment area. Part of the, as I mentioned earlier, cold storage and warehousing are already permitted uses. So this is, we're asking for a variation of self-storage on the property for where warehousing is already permitted on the site. In terms of the Gary Avenue study, again, we've worked diligently with staff in terms of the built form and the animation along the street front, as well as, if you look at the elevations and renderings, a significant upgrade to the building to provide for a beautiful design that will complement and improve Gary Avenue from what it is today. So that's, it is, our client is a self-storage provider, but they've worked diligently to provide for that balance, which is called for by the policies in terms of the Gary Avenue Works, the built form, and the use provisions.
Okay. All right. Anyone else? So again, I'm just sort of struggling a little bit. Frankly, I don't really have any problem with this application as a whole. I'm just struggling, as Phil is, with this one concern raised by planning. I'm not sufficiently competent to weigh in on whether a medical clinic is a good thing or a bad thing, nor am I expert enough to suggest what the size should be, which is really what it comes down to, I guess, in terms of planning's concerns, that they, I guess they don't want a medical clinic to eat up a majority of the space that would otherwise be used for, you know, more friendly pursuits that would be in keeping with the way Geary Avenue is evolving. So you did make a point at one point that one option would be to limit a medical use to one of the current units as described on your floor plan here. Was that something that you were planning, thinking to do? Like, the presumption is the largest one, or?
Yeah, I think the largest one would provide for that flexibility in terms of the tenant, if, as I noted. So limiting it to 219.4, you know, rounding up to 220 square meters would be acceptable.
Okay. I'm just looking for options for when we go into committee, frankly. And the presumption is that the other ancillary units would be used for some sort of street-level commercial, retail, restaurant-type use?
That's right. And that's the additional, the recreational, the retail, the restaurant uses that we've asked for to deal with this.
That's great. Anything else, panel? All right. Thank you very much, sir. We'll take this into committee.
Thank you.
So we have some options ahead of us. We can, planning has asked us to defer. The applicant doesn't want to defer. The applicant has offered up reluctantly to remove variance eight, to sort of dispense with that entirely. Or the third option would be to restrict any kind of medical clinic use to what appears to be the largest current ancillary unit in the proposal. So what do you guys think? Anyone have comments, thoughts?
Yeah. I mean, we'd be replacing a parking lot with an active business. I disagree with the notion that this is negative for Geary. It may have been on that street many times. I'm of the opinion that we shouldn't restrict this proposal and this proponent from having a medical clinic or even limit the square footage dedicated to that medical clinic. I just think about if I was in that area, how would I use this business? If I needed storage, if I wanted a doctor close by or a medical clinic? I think access to primary care is really important. So I find the application supportable without conditions. Thank you.
Nellie?
In terms of the use and, you know, the medical clinic use, that the planning has a problem with, but I don't think that, as far as I understand, it's not that use per se, it's the amount of space.
Correct.
Right? So maybe it would be too harsh to restrict them, you know, just try the variance eight, right? Because, you know, we can still support that use, but we can limit the, you know, the square footage.
Right. Which is what? An option, yes. Phil?
So I agree with Mr. Bissonnet that the proposal as a whole is very much in keeping for the area, and even saying that it's eight stories, I think, is in keeping with how this area is going. I would be most inclined to deny variance eight, actually, based on, you know, because we have the planning report saying not to. And I do think that it comes from the idea of the, especially because it talks about the Gary Avenue study, about this being sort of, it is meant to be a uniquely animated street. That's the direction it has started to go in, and I think they're trying to create something very special, almost like a kind of Kensington Market-esque for like a small strip here that, and I do think that where they're coming from is about it being less animating. So I would be inclined to approve the application but deny variance eight, but I could see myself coming towards the compromise position of one unit there. I do find that medical clinics are much more deadening of street animation than other forms of retail and commercial use. So those are my two cents.
Although not to undermine their practicality.
No, they are practical and important, but I think that's where actually the neighborhood residents comment that, oh, there's an office space nearby that's leasing up. I mean, the medical clinic could be in an office space rather than a retail space.
Okay. Katie?
I appreciate everyone's comments. I think I tend to agree with Phil. I think I would personally like to better understand planning staff's side concerns. I don't feel equipped to proceed with an approval of that variance at this time, but I'd be open to the option of removing that one.
I'm sorry, the last word?
I'd be open to the option of denying that variance.
Okay. All right. Yes, ma'am.
Through you, Mr. Chair. If it offers any help. If the members are considering limiting the use to only unit number two, which is 220 square meters, the members can also impose a condition of a temporary use.
Oh, a time-limited?
Exactly. And I know that they haven't secured anything yet, but given the fact that this is something that we would do with any use variance, it is something that the members can consider. And so if the committee were to allow it up to five years, and then in five years they come back just for this use, that's also something that the members can consider.
Okay. Thank you for that. Comments on that?
Personally, I never liked the idea of the time-limited temporary use or the, you know, temporary use rather than just giving them the use, because then they're just back here and, you know, if it works, it works. If it doesn't work, it doesn't. I'd rather limit the space and not also put a time restriction. So my inclination is to deny the variance, but potentially to limit the space as a compromise.
Okay. I almost feel like we're putting the cart way before the horse on this one, right? It feels like these are just prospective options that the developer is putting forward. Whether in fact you get a medical clinic in there or not is hard to nail down at this point, right? I mean, to your point, there's probably other facilities in the area that might even be more suitable for a medical clinic. So I think we're getting tied up in knots. But the other side of that is, you know, I worry about denying the variance, which basically takes a medical clinic out of play entirely. And I'm not sure that's really something I feel comfortable doing, because maybe this is in fact a great spot for a medical clinic, and it should in fact go there. By denying that variance, you're basically taking that option off the table. And even if we did tie it to a unit, that doesn't necessarily mean a medical clinic will go in there. That just means a medical clinic could go in there.
Yeah.
Right? So I, me personally, I don't like denying the variance just because I don't think I'm sufficiently, and I don't think that's what planning is recommending. Planning isn't recommending no medical clinic. They're recommending, don't make it so big. So I'm personally, I agree with everyone else. You know, this is right next to a rail line. You know, the height is stepped up towards the rail line, stepped down towards the street and the residential properties to the north, so I don't see it being a negative impact. We are seeing lots of these applications for self-storage. They are hugely popular and presumably profitable. You know, animating the first floor is a great idea. I see a lot of these self-storage ones which they are not animating the first floor, so they are just a big brick block. Cars going in and out. This is a good thing that they actually animate the main floor. So I don't, again, I don't think planning is recommending against it. It's more of the size. I feel a little bit uncomfortable about denying the variance just because I think that it just takes the medical clinic off the table, and I don't feel comfortable enough doing that. So I'm more inclined to limit it to a unit. I'm not sure we need to put a time limit on it. A medical clinic involves a whole lot of investment in fairly sophisticated equipment, so I'm not sure limiting it would be in the interest of a medical clinic coming there if they know that it may not be there after five years or three years or whatever. So my view would be approve the application, put a condition on that limits the size of the medical clinic to the 220-meter amenity space. So that's where I'm at. So I don't, I think we need to kick this off. Someone needs to make a motion.
I'm gonna do, I'm gonna see where it goes. I'm gonna put forward a motion to approve all the variances with no conditions.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Bissonnet to approve. There are no other conditions with no conditions. Do I have a second or do that? There's no second, so that motion fails. I'll need another motion. Nellie?
I bring forward the motion to approve this application with the condition of limiting the medical clinic use to 219.4 meters.
Why don't you round it up to 220? Just to make sure we're in here.
220 square meters.
Square meters. And I understand as amended, because we're removing variance number six, correct? So it's amended?
No. Oh, yes.
That's the agent.
Did he remove variance six?
Yeah. Through you, Mr. Chair. Maybe let's just come out of committee very quickly, just to confirm it.
Mr. Mackay, we've lost the thread on the variance that you were removing.
Yes, it would be variance number six, which deals with the accessible space, parking spaces. We do no longer require that. That's been confirmed by zoning staff.
Okay. And all the other variances you're keeping?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you very much. We're back in committee. Okay. So it is amended, and with variance six removed, and with the condition you spoke to, do we have a second or? Mr. Bissonnet, seconds? All in favor? You have your approval with that condition. Thank you very much.
For those that have, are here for our 2:00 PM time slot, the members are still hearing applications from our 9:30 time slot. We have one more application, and then the members have to break for lunch for one hour. So then we will resume at 10:00 after 3:00 today. Okay?
Okay. So, is that feedback? Test? Anybody touch their laptops? Good of you to fess up, though. That's nice. Okay. We move on to item, sorry, I'm losing my mouse. Item number 20, last item for this morning session, 158 Garden Avenue. This is an application to alter the existing two-story semi-detached dwelling by constructing a rear two-story addition and a rear ground-floor deck with stairs. Also to construct a new one-story ancillary building, one-car garage in the rear yard abutting the laneway, the existing rear deck with stairs and the existing one-story garage will be demolished. Committee has before it copy of plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations, two photographs of the subject property, and a covering letter from the agent. We have staff report from urban forestry and an advisory report from urban forestry as well.
Through you, Mr. Chair. We have the agent online and no registered speakers.
Great. Thank you. Okay. Good afternoon, sir.
Oh, hello. It's Judy Sanzale. I am the architect.
Sorry, Judy, can you just speak up a little bit? We can barely hear you.
Yeah. My name is Judy Sanzale. I'm the, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yeah. I'm the architect and the applicant for this project. I live at 212 Fern Avenue, work at 212 Fern Avenue in Toronto.
Great, ma'am. You're only seeking an FSI variance, so we may not need a presentation today. You've seen the forestry advisory report?
Yep. Yes. Just to confirm that, we're keeping the garage the same size intentionally because the owners also want to protect those trees, so that is the intent of the design.
Okay. Panel, does anyone have any questions? All right, ma'am. This is, say, a fairly straightforward application. We don't need a presentation, nor do we have any questions. Is there anything else you'd like to share with us before we take it into committee?
No. Thank you.
Okay. All right. We're in committee. Who wants to take this one? Phil?
Yeah, we only have an FSI variance, which is in keeping with the built form in this area where a lot of homes have been, had small additions over time. There's, it's minor, and for that reason, I would move to approve it, subject to forestry condition number two.
Great. Thank you. Motion by Mr. Gosh to approve, seconded by Ms. Plazer. All in favor? You have your approval, ma'am. Thank you. And that concludes the morning session. Sabrina, we're back at 3? We'll be back at 3 o'clock. Sorry for all those folks who have to wait. Go grab some lunch.